Good evening, I'd like to re-adjourn the meeting of November 18th. This is a nice surprise, we got a full house while we were gone. So, thank you all for being here tonight. All right, we've already done the roll call, pledge of allegiance, executive session. So, we will next do the approval of items by consensus. Our first, unfortunately tonight, we have to do them all separately. So, we'll see. The approval of minutes of October 21st, 2015, regular session. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Carroll, good, all those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Approval of out-of-state field trip for Bentonton, Vermont, for January 8th, 2016. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim, thank you. Acceptance of the Shawshene West PAC donations to the Shawshene School for $1,000. That's very nice, thank you. Mr. Bjork.
So moved.
Okay, second, Mrs. Bonish. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. And acceptance of the Educational Foundation donation. But, I'm going to, what did I do with this? Let me see that here. Okay, I'd like to read these donations because they're very impressive and everybody worked hard on this. The donations are such, the Boutwell School, $744.25. Wildwood School, $932.50. Ubin Street School, $1,992.50. The Shawshene School, $1,773.53. The West, $1,190.25. And the North, $1,253.50. So, I would accept a motion to accept the Wilmington Educational Foundation donation in the total amount of $7,886.53. Mr. Mullis.
So moved.
Thank you. And, second, Mrs. Carroll. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, letter E warrants. G 405, 406, 407, 408. R 205, 206, 207. And L 09, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Mrs. Carroll.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Payroll warrant, 10/28/2015, 11/10/2015. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bjork. Second. All those in favor? Okay. Five in favor, two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Thank you. Warrants, CBO2, CBO3. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Okay. Six in favor and one abstain. Let me see, Mrs. Burns. Thank you. And the warrants, sped 04, sped 05, sped 06. Mr. Bjork.
I'll put that as a motion.
Thank you. Mrs. Brusad.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, and six in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. And warrants, FSO8. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Bonish, second. All those in favor? Okay, six in favor and one abstain, Mrs. Carroll. Thank you very much. All right. I think tonight, we do not, our students.
You should do that with us tonight.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the next item, which would be the superintendent's report.
Yes. And I'm gonna begin with, I think what we love most about these meetings is being able to recognize the accomplishments of our students and our staff. So, in a moment, I'm gonna call these two students up, but I just want to first recognize them. And we had two students last year, we had several students last year at the intermediate level who, for the first time, participated in the Math Olympiad program and the Math Olympiad competition. And we actually had two students who were both at the intermediate level last year, one in grade four and one in grade five, one at the West, one at the North, who actually topped, were some of the top finishers nationwide in the Math Olympiad. So, we would like to recognize those two students who are here tonight with their families. And the first is Anay Gandhi. And Anay is currently a sixth-grade student at Wilmington Middle School, but was formerly fifth-grade student at the North Intermediate School, as well as, we have Shrikar Malajasula, who is at the West Intermediate School in grade five, last year was in grade four. So, we'd like to call them up and present them with these certificates and congratulate them for their outstanding accomplishments and maybe get a picture with them, with the principals. And maybe Mrs. Appolito as well would like to join us for the pictures since she won't.
They're saying this was harder than the test. Couldn't do this. It's a nice picture. You make Wilmington very proud, we're so glad you were able to come tonight.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, we also have tonight, a commendation, a certificate of commendation for a staff member who is actually both a teacher and a coach here in Wilmington Public Schools. And that's Sue Hendy, she's a Shawshene physical education teacher and also Wilmington High School varsity girls soccer coach. And she has achieved quite an accomplishment in winning her 250th game as a soccer coach here in Wilmington. Ironically, that came at the hands of my former district's soccer team, Reading. But, yeah, that was your 250th victory, correct? Yes. And Sue has been a coach here for 28 years? Is that right? 28 years. So, quite, that in itself is quite an accomplishment. But, to achieve that landmark of 250 games in her time here, she's actually had six league titles, one Division II North sectional championship title, and one Division II State finalist trophy. And, to her credit, as is, as we know, Sue to be very modest about the accomplishment, I don't even think that she realized when she had hit that landmark. So, we congratulate Sue and if you wanna come up and put the certificate for us.
Thank you, Sue, congratulations. We're very happy for you and that we have you.
The other, the only other item, a couple of small items I wanted to report on, which is that we did have our underage substance abuse workshop on November 10th. And we had what I consider to be an outstanding turnout. We had, by all counts, at least 100, perhaps a few more, parents and staff members in attendance, as well as folks from the Town Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, and our SROs, and Chief Begonis was there as well. So, we thank everybody for attending and we're gonna continue to build off of this, these parent education workshops to provide information to parents. And then, lastly, although fairly significantly, and I know you received information, so this is more for our public at home, so they're aware, that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, yesterday, by a vote of eight to three, approved the transition to what's being called a next-generation MCAS that would be given, for the first time, to students in the Commonwealth in the spring of 2017 and would use both PARK and MCAS items, along with items that are specifically developed for Massachusetts. I think the, most of, the superintendents, most, most school committees, most administrator staff, feel that this allows us to retain our local control, our state control, of what that assessment will look like. It also gives us some time, although some folks are curious if the timeframe is realistic, given a spring 2017 new assessment to be administered. It's, it's, the plan right now is that they're going to immediately engage in a procurement process that will identify a new vendor that will develop this next-generation assessment. So, that'll be done through a competitive bid process. And, basically, they're gonna not only look at the ELA and the Math MCAS, but they will also look in the future towards a timeline for implementing perhaps a revised science and also a restoration of a social studies, humanities, history exam as well. So, they are going to also take some time and look a little bit at the curriculum frameworks, which are five years old now, and make sure that those curriculum frameworks, before they dive into the development of the assessment, make sure that there are no adjustments that they'd like to make to some of those curriculum standards. So, the plan right now for 2016, which I'm sure everybody is eager to know, is that districts who administered PARK last year will be required to administer PARK this year. Districts who administered MCAS will have the option of doing MCAS or PARK. If a district wants to remain with MCAS, there's no action required on the part of the committee or the community. If they want to go to PARK, then action of the committee would be required. In this case, I think it was very clear last year that this board, due to a lot of the uncertainties surrounding the assessment, felt strongly that it was in our best interest here in Wilmington to remain with the MCAS. So, that is my assumption, is that the board continues to feel that same way, that we should proceed with the MCAS. That will allow us to continue to use the assessment data to look at trends over time, rather than switching to PARK and sort of dealing with that different assessment and does it align to the prior year's results? Because we spend a lot of time looking at not just the prior year's results, but the trends in those results. So, I think that that is a wise move for Wilmington to remain with the MCAS and then we'll be as involved as we are able to be involved as educators, administrators, and superintendents and committee members in the development of the next-generation assessment. The only other thing to take note of is that the commissioner has made it very clear that by the spring 2019 administration of this test, it will be solely computer-based. So, there is a plan in place to transition and there will be no paper option available as of the spring of 2019.
Mrs. Burns.
When do you expect to get a better, this may be a premature question, a better idea as to what the timeline is gonna look like with regards to when districts will be notified as to what the test is gonna look like so that staff can be prepared in administering it? When do you kind of anticipate that?
That's a good question. I certainly haven't heard anything about the timeline. I will say that information is coming out fast and furious. They just announced today that there are conference calls scheduled for district assessment folks and superintendents, assistant superintendents and principals on Monday and Tuesday, just to talk about the timeline for the current year. So, I think that is everybody's immediate mindset, is what are we doing in the spring? What's the window gonna look like? Is it gonna, what's the test window? Because they had us reserve test window dates, but now they're already talking about potentially shifting those back a week. So, what do you, if you're gonna do PARK, what do you need to do to get ready? So, that information is coming out next week. I know that they're very heavily involved in the procurement process right now, so that's their major focus. So, I think that's gonna take a couple months, several months for them to, by the time they put the specifications together, get them out, get the proposals, evaluate the proposals, and award the contract to a vendor. And then, they will begin the process of developing. I assume at that point, they will reach out to educators and they will form teams of educators to help with the development and the development of test items and the review of test items. I assume, and I believe, we can begin now, we see some, there's some PARK questions that have been released, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have one question. I think that I read that the year 2017, they're going to hold people harmless from the test.
Yes.
And if that's the case, I'm thinking that because our students have no, have had no access to the PARK at all, we might think that that year we would do something to do more, leaning more towards PARK, so at least they'd get some, some idea of what it is.
So, the spring of 2016 is where you have the choice of PARK versus MCAS. Well, if you, I should clarify, if you administered PARK, you don't have a choice, you have to continue to administer PARK. If you administered MCAS, you do have a choice. And so, certainly, that is an option for Wilmington to go to that in the spring of 2016, which, that's only a few months away, obviously. In the spring of 2017, we don't have any option. The exam will no longer be called PARK or MCAS. I don't know what it will be called, next-generation MCAS, MCAS 2.0, or perhaps they'll come up with an entirely new name. But, everybody will be taking the same test. And it will be, there will be a paper-based and computer-based option, but it will be the same test. And we're told it will have PARK-like elements and it will have MCAS-like elements and it will have Massachusetts-specific elements.
It will be an adventure.
Yes. That is for sure.
All right, okay, I just wanted to check on that, all right?
But, you are correct in that the results in, from that first year of that assessment, everybody will be held harmless. The accountability results will be released, the percentiles will be released. You would know if had the results been not, had been actual results, accountability results, you would know where your schools would fall from a percentile ranking percentage and where you might have fallen from accountability. But, you will not be subjected to that accountability status for that one year.
The other part is the idea of the MCAS being the test for graduation. Do you hear anything about them changing that or thinking that through?
They eventually, oh, they, I think they will still use whatever state assessment is in place as the future competency determination. But, for right now, through the class of 2019, it will be, the 10th grade will be taking MCAS, only, only because this new assessment will need to be obviously phased in through the grades.
Okay, thank you. You know, I wanted to say to our visitors, in case you wanted to go on your way, don't, not you, oh, this group. Sorry. I can hear the superintendent now going. No, they can't go. But, the people who came to visit us, we'd be, we're thrilled to have you. But, feel free at any time that you can go on your way and watch us on TV.
That's my report.
Okay. Our next items would be old business, of which there is none. And, now we'll go on to new business. We did those two. And, we've done the first two. The next one would be the conference report. Do you have a report?
I do, thank you.
I know it.
Did you want to talk about revenue assumptions?
That would be good. Oh, is that what she's gonna talk about? No, she said no. Do you know?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We're, five of us went to the conference, Mrs. Burns, Mr. Bjork, myself, Mrs. Bonish, Mrs. Brusad. So, we all tried to separate out and go to different proj, different presentations. The interesting part was that the guest speakers, they have, they have each day a bigger, a guest speaker who's an expert in the field. And to tell you the truth, when you looked at it in the booklet, it looked like, ew, are we gonna be liking this or not? Because they, we weren't familiar with them. They were so excellent. You were familiar with them? Oh, Mrs. Bonish was familiar with them, the rest of us were not. So. But, we had a really, really interesting time with them, they were excellent. So, I'll just start, did you want to start, Mrs. Burns?
Sure, I don't wanna read too much. There's, there's two that I have to say that I, that besides the keynote speaker, Yao.
Yao Sheng.
Yes.
He was phenomenal. He was just absolutely phenomenal. He was a professor. Is it, is he from Oregon or? I was a little confused in the conversation, but his discussion took place about, that a paradigm needs be had in education where, you know, for the longest time, the nation has been preparing their students for career and college readiness. And that what they're finding is that students are now graduating college either underemployed or unemployed. And that what's happening is the manufacturers in the country are finding less and less skilled workers because there's no one coming out of vocational schools and such. And he feels that a kind of, I don't wanna say renaissance is the best word per se, but to, that a change in education, going back to a more well-rounded education thus to learn common, those common core items of language and arts and math, have a more broader range of introducing children to that and entrepreneurial skills. So, would, would probably be the path next to take for educating our kids. He was phenomenal, I took a lot from that, I'm a big supporter of well-rounded education. But, the other two takes that I have to say, I was really quite impressed was, were that Superintendent Delai and I took part in a workshop on Massachusetts Recovery High Schools, of which there are five in the state, which was something that I, I didn't, wasn't aware that was in existence. They're public schools that deal with students who are referred to them, who may have drug addiction and/or are unable to be educated in a regular public school, whether it be stigma, whether it be that they're returning to the school from rehab. Phenomenal what the services that they offer are like with regards to not only a rigorous curriculum that they give these students, but the emotional and group support in their recovery process to keep them sober. And I thought, I'm sure Superintendent Delai can speak to more detail, but I was very taken back that these schools actually do exist in the state of Massachusetts. And although, there's a need, I don't, they don't, they're only half, only half of the students are enrolled for what they can legally take in. And determining as to what that, why that is, they're leaning towards it may just be, but that nobody realizes that they're there. So, that was, that was a great resource, I think, to utilize if, if we, God forbid, ever find ourselves in the need. And the other aspect is, was the PARK common core update with regards to what's coming down the line with the nuances with, this was prior to the approval of the Board of Education on the MCAS 2.0. I, I, I'm optimistic cautiously, not knowing exactly how, what they're gonna, what elements of MCAS and PARK, they're gonna merge. And I think there are areas there that they both could do better on. And so, I'm a little hesitant and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that this MCAS 2.0 is more aligned with offering assessments that can actually, they're more accurate in student learning and potential. But, I'm still kind of cautious because I really don't, until I find out exactly what that looks like and what that could mean for us. But, it was actually informative to find out exactly where the Department of Education is on that and what the, what the vision is for this test.
I think the positive thing was that the school committees and the superintendents worked together on this to make sure that PARK wasn't the only test. And it shows that we do have some leverage. And if you work together hard, you can do something.
You're right, absolutely right.
That was good. Would anyone else like to? I have a, I have one thing. Okay, I just wanted to say that the superintendent and myself were on a panel, for a panel discussion about the new superintendent's program that she is in her second year. And that, that was a really interesting discussion. And all of the other members came and supported us, which was very nice. And they did get the impression that we are very, very happy with Mr. Delai and how things are going and how she's been able to tap into so many areas of our school system and get them organized and start working on them. And so, I think that, that was a lot of fun to start out that way on that. Did anyone else have?
I was just gonna say that this was my third time attending the conference and there's always something different that's a takeaway for me in continuing my education as a school committee member and what can I bring back to our district. The keynote speakers, I thought, were fabulous and I, the one, the best takeaway I had from Young Zhao was his reference to, not only should be preparing our children for college and career readiness, but he said something to the effect of, getting them out of our basements. Which, that summed it all up for me. Get them out, get them working, get them out of the basement. But, but once again, I appreciated the opportunity to attend this conference, look forward to many more.
Yep. So, this was my first one and it was, it was very educational. I learned a lot about other communities and how they're very different from ours. You know, some of them are similar, but just things that go on in, in schools. It's, it was, it was just very eye-opening. There was a, a whole talk about poverty in schools, which was, you know, you don't really get that. You know, I mean, I know that it's there, but it was very eye-opening. And there was also a talk about creating a safe school climate, supporting LGBTQ, which was, again, very educational and eye-opening. And so, my takeaway was, I just learned a lot about, you know, different things that I, you know, you know about, but you don't really understand a lot about it. And I also enjoyed Young Zhao and his out-of-the-basement readiness scale. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you, you all had asked me to remind you because we had some, one of the great parts about this conference, I think, is that we all get to network with our colleagues and learn about how other towns do things and what practices other districts and communities employ. And we had learned that there were some communities that have a very interesting approach at the beginning of the budget process, where they, yeah. Where they get, they pull all the boards together, Board of Selectmen's, Finance Committee, School Committee, and other elected boards. And there's a presentation by the municipal finance staff on the revenue assumptions that the town is utilizing, not unlike the state budget process, the first step in the state budget process is they convene essentially a revenue summit and they, there's a presentation of what the assumptions are for revenues. And obviously, revenues drive what you're able to ask for in terms of budget requests. So, I know you, you were all very interested in that. And I have begun initial conversations with the town manager and intend to share with him, some of the folks, some of the school committee members from other districts shared their presentations with us and intend to share that with him. And he certainly was, was intrigued by that idea. So, it may be something that we look to, to perhaps take advantage of here in the future as well. I think it would be informative for all the boards to know what the thinking is around Chapter 70 and property taxes and new growth and all those things that really drive the revenue picture for the town.
That's right. You used the wrong words, that's why we didn't remember what you talked about. It got too, yeah. Excellent. Yeah, we were all intrigued by that, we thought it was, it sounds like an interesting way to do it. And actually, quite a few communities do, do it that, do the process that way. So, it's something, be interesting to see how the town reacts to it. Okay, thank you. Our next item of business would be the district improvement plan.
So, as you know, I'm sure this is in the regulations that, that schools, districts and schools present to their school committees, district and school improvement plans on an annual basis for review and approval by school committee members. The, these plans are developed with input from advisory councils, in the case of the schools, from the school advisory councils. That's a key function of the school advisory council, which is, includes members of not only the staff of the building, but parents as well and administrators. And so, that, that certainly has taken place at all of our schools for the school improvement plan. I did wanna mention that this year was a little bit different from last year because if you recall. if you recall, last year, my being new to the district, we were operating under a strategic plan that was sort of for all intents and purposes coming to a close as we developed a new district strategy for improvement of student outcomes. And we now have that document, and as you know, you all adopted that document on September 23rd. And that document has become the basis for our planning efforts. And you will see in the case of the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans, that we really look to align the strategic goals and those plans to the strategic plan. And in the document, you're gonna see now the district improvement plan. I've actually tried to show you exactly how the various goals in the action plan relate to the strategic priorities that are in the strategic plan. I did also want to note that you probably will see less emphasis on MCAS as measures of success, and that is as a result of the conversations that you all had back in August during your retreat. And I thought that was a very progressive conversation that offered us some flexibility to think about other measures of student success other than achievement on standardized tests. So we all, I think, as a team, appreciated that flexibility. And so you may see a bit of a de-emphasis on MCAS, although you will still see MCAS measures in some of our goal statements. So with that said, the order of operations here is I'm gonna present the district improvement plan first, and then we're gonna go school by school. And the early childhood directors, in the case of the early childhood centers, and the principals will come up and present each of their individual plans to you, which will include an update on the progress on goals from last year's plans, and then the goals from this year. And then they can answer any questions you might have about each of the specific plans.
And can I just suggest that we, we vote on them after each time?
Absolutely.
Instead of all the rest at the end?
The chair's prerogative, we certainly can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Included for you to see is just that, so you see the linkage to our strategic plan is our vision statement, our mission statement, and the core values that were developed in this past year and recently adopted. And we want to talk a little bit about, as we head into 15, 16, and actually, we're well into 15 and 16, talk about the goals, the district improvement goals from last year. The first goal we had was around closing the gap. We tied that to PPI. We can't necessarily tell you exactly if we hit the mark, although we suspect we didn't because those accountability ratings will not be out until, at this point, we're hearing December. However, in terms of the action steps, many of the action steps that we laid out were accomplished. So we assess this as having made some progress because we were able to implement and take on those action steps. With respect to Goal Two, Developing Learning Leaders, again, the majority of the action steps there were completed, and here we felt that significant progress was made. Our leadership team participated in instructional rounds, and we were able to do that at every single one of the buildings. And I think everybody feels that that was a very useful experience. We also were able to develop our abilities around collaborative inquiry, facilitating meeting time, and using meeting time much more effectively as well, and to facilitate that collaboration of meeting time. And we made some progress as well in deepening our understanding of the curriculum framework standards and standards-based instruction. In terms of family engagement, this is an area where we did, we were able to make some good progress. I think the most popular thing in this goal area that was accomplished, and thanks to Mr. Ellis, was the release of the new Wilmington Public Schools Connect app. I know I use it on my phone nearly daily. And today, we've had, as you can see, almost 7,500, we've probably surpassed that now at this point, downloads of this district app. So clearly a very popular way to communicate with parents. There were some other, there was also some progress made around posting parent resources, particularly around curriculum, that helps parents understand exactly what to expect when students came home and what they were learning, particularly in the area of elementary mathematics. And we obviously had some aggressive plans, and I think we didn't quite get to everything, but I think a large part, that was due to the fact that our OIT staff was very highly involved and engaged in the high school building project. But we continue to work on the family engagement piece this year as well. And of course, the high school building technology deployment was a fantastic success. For District Improvement Goal Four, Curriculum and Instruction Planning, here we were looking to basically improve the alignment of our curriculum with the standards and continue to develop high-quality, rigorous, standards-based instruction and lesson plans. And a lot of work happened here. The Literacy Plan Committee and the ELA task groups did a tremendous amount of work. They completed writing rubrics for each type of writing for all grade levels, K to five. And they also developed curriculum maps for some of those elementary literacy grades. The curriculum renewal work continues. Vertical teams have been instrumental to that work. We've reformulated them this year as curriculum teams, and they've aligned them to the curriculum renewal cycle, or in the process of doing that. But a lot of work was done. And this year, we look forward to doing a lot of work in terms of loading up those curriculum maps into digital format using a module of Aspen known as IMS, so that those resources would be available electronically, not just for staff, but also for parents. And they can follow the curriculum as well over the course of a year and know what units and topics are being covered at a particular time, and access resources for them to support their child when they're at home. In terms of the Goal Five, Improvement of Special Education Services, we set out here to, to be able to look especially at entrance and exit criteria, and to begin to evaluate our inclusionary practices. And here, significant progress was made. Exit and entrance criteria were developed. They're being used this year under the guidance of the team chairs in the district. And a comprehensive evaluation of our inclusion services was completed. And the recommendation, most notably, to begin a task force has been implemented, and we have an inclusion task force in place this year. We'll talk more about that for this year's goals. For Goal Six, Resource Allocation, we continue to analyze and develop methodologies to analyze our resource use, to look at how our resources are allocated across buildings, to do per pupil analysis across buildings, but also in comparison to other districts, and identify opportunities for reallocation, for restructuring, for cost savings, for cost efficiencies. So I think we've made some good progress in this area as well. School Safety and Security, we expanded the District Safety Committee last year, and because of that, we're able to make significant progress under the leadership of Mr. Regiro and Mr. Straznik, who co-chaired that committee. They have done an incredible job in developing a new emergency response plan. They used a comprehensive threat assessment process to identify exactly what the topics and areas that needed to be covered in that response plan. And they are working towards finalizing that document by the end of the year. And as you all know, we continue to implement the ALIS protocols here in Wilmington. And we actually continue to get phone calls from other districts and have had principals, administrators from other districts come to Wilmington to view some of our ALIS drills because they're implementing that in their districts. And finally, this is a goal that the school committee was very passionate about and added to our plan last year, which was supporting the behavioral health of all students. Again, we've made some significant headway in this area. We do have formed a Behavioral Health Task Force last year, very cross-disciplined, across all schools. And that group has been meeting regularly. They, they did the behavioral health self-assessment last year in all schools to identify exactly where we are with respect to implementing the behavioral health frameworks. And they have a comprehensive plan in place. It's one of our strategic priorities. And they developed the action steps and goals under that Safe and Supportive Schools strategic objective and strategic priority. So that's a recap of where we are in terms of last year. And so here we are this year for our goals for this year. And as you can see, we continue to have a goal around closing the achievement and proficiency gap for students. As you know, from the MCAS presentations that we did, we still have a persistent and significant gap between our high-needs and non-high-needs students. So we want to take some proactive steps to make sure that we're monitoring our students, adjusting instruction, and meeting the needs of those struggling learners. Our goals, if you will, are defined this year by the percentage of students in the high-needs subgroup that will score advanced or proficient. The numbers that you see up here, the, from 47 to 55 in ELA, 33 to 43, that's based on, the targets are based on the statewide average for students in the high-needs subgroup. So we're looking to take our students to where the state average is for students in that subgroup. You can see the action steps. I won't focus a whole lot, but you can also see from the action steps, what I've done here is to align it to the strategic priorities. So where you see SP 1.3, 2.2, that's the alignment of the action step to the strategic priority in the strategic plan. I think that the most important thing to focus on is what we hope to achieve, what outcomes. And, you know, we're hoping that 50% of our struggling learners that we identify will meet the goals established by the teams that work with them by the end of the year. We look to have a recommendation for a data analysis tool and a proposal for funding that and an implementation plan. That tool will help us more effectively and efficiently be able to monitor student learning and student, both academic and non-academic measures of student growth in a much more efficient way, so that staff aren't spending their time gathering data, but examining and analyzing data. We want to look at our IST procedures and make sure that they're followed consistently in all schools. As you know, that-
Excuse me, but ISTs?
Yes. Instructional Support Team. So this is part of our, our D cap, our district curriculum accommodation plan, that based on certain metrics, students are referred. If they're not achieving to certain levels, or there are certain challenges for the student, they are referred to the instructional support teams, and those teams meet to identify interventions and strategies to use to help those students.
Thank you.
And we want to continue to utilize our professional learning community strategies. And we've, as you know, we had a cohort of 30 administrators and staff trained last year, and we want to continue to do that this summer and the following summer, so that somewhere around a third of our staff will be formally trained in how to implement professional learning, community strategies, and protocols. We found this, this year, as we're implementing these, that staff are finding them very useful in guiding the work of, of meeting time and to use meeting time much more efficiently. And we'll monitor that through the use of surveys. We're looking also at the Standards-Based Report Card, looking to improve that. That's a means of communicating with parents how children are performing, and also implementing some sort of a data dashboard that would be available to parents electronically, so they can track and monitor the progress of their students. Developing, expanding leadership capacity, this is, again, sort of a continuation of goal, but this too, this is tied especially to strategic priority, strategic objective one around developing learning leaders, but also tied to some of the other strategic priorities. And here, we want to continue to use those PLC strategies to facilitate administrator and teacher collaboration, and use those to have more effective use of meeting time, continue the instructional rounds, and continue to support staff in how to use data to monitor student progress and adjust instruction, and to utilize the evaluation process for both administrators and for educators in a much more effective way. And so you see some of our outcomes around the use of the PLC strategies, around the percentage of staff that have strong measurable student learning goals for those struggling learners, that teachers are comfortable with using data, that our goals, and you will see that that has happened, are tied to our strategic plan, and that educators feel that they're getting effective feedback as part of that educator evaluation process. Safe and supportive schools, something that, as you know, is near and dear to my heart. And again, this is around identifying the structures and resources necessary to really promote a truly inclusive learning environment and to address the social, emotional, and behavior needs of all students. As I mentioned, we already have a newly-formed inclusion task force. That task force has actually met twice already, with a third meeting coming up. We have a group, a subgroup of the Behavioral Health Task Force that's researching and identifying social, emotional learning curriculum. And we also have folks from the task force, the Behavioral Health Task Force, looking at implementing the multi-tiered system of supports, particularly around positive behavioral interventions and supports, and a tier-two support around collaborative and proactive problem-solving that they're doing the pilot for at the West. We're also looking at our health curriculum, and that's being done by the health educators here in the district, and the mental health first aid and suicide prevention. As you know, we receive grant funding, and the SEEM Collaborative is hosting that training locally, so we don't have to send folks far away. So we're really excited about that. We're gonna be able to save some money by not having to send them to California and Texas, and take some of that savings and train an additional person. So we're very excited about, about that work. Enhancing Communications and Collaboration, this is a follow-up to our Family Engagement Goal as well, but this, again, is tied directly to our strategic plan, several of the strategic priorities. We've already formed a superintendent's district advisory council, and Mrs. Broussard is our representative to that. And we have some folks here that are also on that council. We've had our first meeting, and we're meeting five more times over the course of the year. We've got a meeting schedule in place. I continue to produce a superintendent's blog. It was a bad thing that Neil showed me how I could look at the stats and the views because I'd become obsessed about increasing my number of views. So I guess it's a good incentive. We continue to do our monthly newsletter for staff, and again, more educational opportunities to parents. We've already done the Substance Abuse Workshop, and we have several others teed up or in the works for the remainder of the school year as well. We hope we get as much turnout as we did for the Substance Abuse Workshop. We're engaging in strategic outreach to the business community to enhance relationships and create more opportunities for students. That's being done not just by me, but we, principals, assistant principals, our staff is doing that. We have DECA students who are involved in making those connections as well, so we're working on many fronts. And expanding student learning opportunities by developing stronger connections to area colleges and universities. We already work with Middlesex Community College, but I've had some preliminary discussions with Regis College about perhaps an early college program that they might be interested in working with us here in Wilmington, and always looking for partnerships with some of our other area colleges like Merrimack and UMass Lowell as well. Achieving Operational Effectiveness, we continue to look at ensuring that our resources are allocated based on student need and aligned to our improvement goals, and that we operate in a way that's most effective and most efficient with our resources. And so we're looking, we're benchmarking our spending across schools to identify equity and equality of spending. We're looking at our chart of accounts to make sure that expenses are classified in a way that helps us do these analyses. Establishing processes for staff, parents, and community members to have input into budget priorities. This was done with the district advisory council. We had a lengthy discussion about budget priorities. And in early December, I'll be going out to staff, there'll be four opportunities for staff members to attend a voluntary superintendent's forum to talk about budget, to learn more about the budget process, and to give us some input about budget priorities at the staff level as well. And looking to improve transparency and the comprehensiveness of the budget and the budget document that we provide you as well. And finally, to make sure that where we don't have documented procedures and procedure manuals in place, that we address that by putting those documents together. Instructional Planning and Improvement, the core of our work here is around curriculum instruction and making sure that we are aligned to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, making sure that both administrators and educators have that deep knowledge of the standards, that we're continuously revising and renewing our curriculum, and that our curriculum and lessons that we're implementing are high-quality, standards-aligned- are, are high-quality, standards-aligned and rigorous. And that we use data to identify student learning gaps and continuously monitor, adjust and provide interventions to students based on that information and use that information to identify the professional development needs of staff so that we can continue to strengthen their instructional practices. Uh, and you can see our, our plan here around, um, you know, this, doing the work of learning the standards, deeper knowledge of the standards that's done at the curriculum cabinet meetings in large part. Uh, self-assessment, I know we're this year going to be doing a self-assessment of, uh, or not a self-assessment, but we're going to do sort of a literacy audit at the elementary level and as a, as a, you know, a, a precursor to looking at, beginning to make the shift to, uh, a readers writers balanced literacy model. So, that's an important step in terms of literacy here in the district. Uh, the middle school math has been a topic of much conversation and, and those folks are engaged in, uh, looking at the frameworks under the, the guidance and the direction of, of Sandy DeValle, who's here, our, our new, uh, K, uh, six-eight math coach. And the hope is that they will begin to look at, uh, some, uh, different math curriculums with the, an evaluation criteria in place and a hope of piloting something for next year and as we did with invisions when, as we went through that process. Um, science, those science standards should be, uh, out. They're out, out now for public comment and they should be in place in January and that work has already begun to align our curriculum. And that's a multi-district initiative that Kate has been very involved with as well as some teachers here, uh, in the district has, have been part of that. So, that's all good work that's happening. Um, and I, and as you can see, we continue to implement some of the ELA and math, um, even down to the primary and early childhood levels. And finally, the last goal, uh, goal seven around personalized learning. You can see this embedded within our vision statement as well as in our stra- strategic priorities. And here, we really seek to make sure that students in our district receive a personalized learning experience, that, uh, that, that, uh, instruction is individualized and appropriately differentiated based on the needs of the students. Uh, MTSS is one way we look to establish that, to make sure we have strong s- tiered supports to offer to students. Um, we also look, uh, at leveraging technology. So, uh, you know, Mr. Ellis will be doing, uh, some work in developing with his staff and folks in his technology committee, a digital learning plan that will outline how we'll leverage technology to personalize learning over the next three years. Uh, hoping to, uh, and we'll talk more about this, uh, implement a one-to-one learning device initiative at the secondary level. And we have some ideas and we'll be presenting more of that to you over the next couple of months. Um, but, oh, in a way that's sustainable for Wilmington Public Schools. So, not purchasing a, a device, but offering a, with the Chromebooks being so inexpensive, I think we can offer that device, uh, to parents, uh, in a way that's, that's affordable for them and be able to begin to, to leverage technology in that way. And to look at learning management systems and tools that allow for more blended learning and online, uh, learning opportunities, uh, for students. There's a lot of pretty neat stuff out there that is adaptive and that is responsive and allows kids to be engaged in a much different way. And, uh, I think, you know, we're going to look to be able to, uh, implement some of those systems, uh, over the next couple of years. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? It's actually for Mr. Ellis. Last year you had published a list of suggested or recommendations to parents for holiday purchases of devices that would be a good fit thinking ahead. Could you do that again?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you want to-
Thank you.
Did you want to, um, do each one separately?
Yes, yes.
Okay, do we have any other questions on this? All right, um, I entertain a motion to approve the district improvement plan for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year. This is Bonish, second, this is Broussard. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim, thank you. I put you in favor. Thank you.
The down button. The down now.
So, our first, uh, school improvement plan presentation is Jen Mahon, who's the early childhood director, as you know, at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. This is throwing me off. So, um, I'm Jen Mahon. I'm the director at the Boutwell. So, we did a very brief summary of what we had accomplished, um, last school year. And, um, last school year, what happened is we actually ended up revamping our preschool goal because we, um, purchased a new curriculum that we've implemented fully this year. But one of the exciting things that happened at the early childhood level was we were able to open two full-day integrated preschool programs, which I'm happy to report are extremely successful and the children and the staff are really doing well and we're so, we're thrilled to have it. Um, and the parents are happy as well, which is good. Um, as far as with the, so what the preschool teachers continue to do is use their already, um, in-place assessments, which were basically observational anecdotal records that they would share with parents, um, during parent-teacher conferences and at the preschool, pre-kindergarten conference time. Um, with the kindergarten, we were able to continue to look at the development of early literacy skills. Um, we've noticed over the couple of years, there's been a slight trend that we seem to just, we're just missing that target. So, um, what we've decided this year, and this will lead right into, um, our goals at one, at some point, um, is we want to just look at our current materials and see what we need to tweak, um, from a supplemental standpoint. But, so our first school improvement goal this year is to develop a standards-based preschool, pre-kindergarten report card that aligns with our new OWL's curriculum. Um, the teachers have really embraced, um, the new curriculum and our plan is to tie that curriculum into the report card. Um, and you can see all the action steps here. We're using that same professional learning community model. We meet twice a month, both Boutwell and Wildwood, um, to review what's been taught and how we're going to tie that into the standards-based report card. That's going to be parent-friendly. Um, at the kindergarten level, we're, again, we're focusing on our AmesWeb data. Um, when the children arrive at the Boutwell and at the Wildwood, we know their birthdays and their names. So, we get their data at the end of the year and we kind of back into some of these pieces, um, at the end of each school year. So, again, we use the AmesWeb, which is a test of early literacy skills. And over the last couple of years, we've noticed a very slight decline. Um, and it's about eight percent, which isn't huge, but we don't want any decline. So, what we do, what we're going to be doing this year is the entire kindergarten team is working again in that professional learning community, community model. Um, we get together twice a month and we've been reviewing a lot of the supplemental materials that the classroom teachers are using and just trying to identify, are there tools that we know are working really well? Are there tools that need to be put in the toss pile or put away for another time? So, that's really what we're working through. And then another piece that we're wrapping into this, um, professional learning community model is, again, looking at the student growth and really monitoring our students as they progress through, um, kindergarten. And again, the action steps are all lined out. I'm afraid I'm going to click too far and miss somebody, but... So, there's a lot of exciting things happening at the early childhood level and, um, we're really thrilled that it's happening. Any questions?
I have one question. I saw, I think it's in yours. What is the ghost vision protocol?
So, it's a diff- it's a way for teachers to go and observe, um, different classrooms and kind of not really be there, but be there to observe. It's supposed to be a little less threatening, I think would be the right way to say it. Um, but that's something we have to work up to. We have to make sure everybody's comfort, comfortable with the idea of having their colleagues come in and, and observe what they're doing. Um, but I think, you know, in the spirit of the professional learning community model, the, the teachers and the staff are, are really excited about it. I'm very excited about it. I think it's streamlined a lot of processes even within the building. Um, so...
Thank you. It sounds interesting. Any other, anyone have questions?
Looking, well, I have looked up each and every one of those protocols just to figure out what it was and find, I find it to be very, um, very invol- involved, I mean, participant-wise, but, um, I just, unique as to how the approach is in, um-
It's fantastic.
In the development process. Yeah, I'm looking at, I'm like, oh, that's-
Yes, we, we, all of us who participated in the training have a green book and our green books are getting very worn and they're filled with stickies. But it is, it's, it's fascinating and it's so helpful for guiding your meetings.
Especially the, the one, the chalk-talk protocol where no one speaks and it's just written, right? Is that how that's done? I just find that unique. It's like blocking out the noise.
I, I just had one more question. I realized, um, did we not just okay a new report card a couple of years ago?
That was for the kindergarten.
For kindergarten? But now you're looking to do a new report card for kindergarten?
No.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just-
Preschool and pre-kindergarten. So, preschool is our three-year-olds. Pre-kindergarten is our four-year-olds.
All right, I misread this. I thought it was for kindergarten too.
No, just the, the three and four-year-olds.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the Boutwell Early Childhood School Improvement Plan from the- Second, Mrs. Broussard. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And next up, we have Charlotte Phillips, who is the early childhood director across the other side of town at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
Welcome, Charlotte. I'm not sure that we ever met you before, but we're glad to see you.
Well, we, we have met, but I think I have a forgettable face because-
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
I'll make sure I don't forget it.
That's okay. You can forget. Okay, so, um, some of our goals are a little bit repetitive with Boutwell, you'll find, but I'll just give you a quick summary of, uh, last year. Uh, we also had the goal of trying to create an assessment, but then we kind of changed that because we adopted the OWL, um, curriculum, which, again, we also have a new full-day this year. So, our half-day program, our substantially separate classroom and our full-day program are all administering the OWL. So, it's very exciting. Uh, last year, our kindergarten focused on letter sound fluency, um, from the AmesWeb assessment. That went well. Uh, we made a lot of progress. We would like to make even more progress. So, a lot of our teachers this year, that's their individual classroom goals. They're going to continue to work on that. And we also will continue to vote our PLC time, um, to that, analyzing that data and looking at those, the growth in the AmesWeb. Uh, our first school improvement goal is very much, um, similar to the Boutwell's goal of creating that preschool and pre-kindergarten report card, um, based on the OWL curriculum. So, uh, our action steps are the same. Both schools are actually working together. We're having joint PLC time so that our, um, goals are the same. This goal is, um, also for the Wildwood and the Boutwell. It's just, uh, on our school improvement plan, but it's a joint goal uh, to revamp the registration process for preschool and kindergarten um, because the Early Childhood Center is, um, parents and families' first experience with the Wilmington Public Schools. We want to make that as family-friendly and gentle as possible. Um, there's a lot of paperwork involved, a lot of, um, meetings and deadlines for parents. So, we want to use our time with our school advisory council to really look at those processes and create some guidelines, um, for families. And our school advisory council has already started looking at that. They're very, very enthusiastic about that. So, so, we're happy. Uh, that may have, may be a very ambitious one-year goal, may take more like two years, but we'll see.
Any questions? Mrs. Broussard?
I just have a quick question with regards to the revamping of the, um, the last goal.
Yeah.
Will the, the kindergarten screening piece also be maybe incorporated in there?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, very good. Thank you.
That's what might take two years, is that looking at both those pieces is a lot, so... But it's definitely will be discussed this year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I noticed what's, uh, what has me, what had me confused was that, um, you've really focused, the two schools are focusing on the preschool, the preschool group and the pre-kindergarten group as opposed to specific goals for kindergarten. So, I'm assuming you're still working on your goals for kindergarten?
Very much so, yeah.
Yeah, but we're working, this, this is the new way to go right now.
Well, our registration is for both too. It's for preschool and kindergarten, so that covers both grade levels.
Sounds good. We all set? Thank you. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the Wildwood Early Childhood Center Improvement Plan. Mrs., Mrs. Bonish, so, second, Mrs. Broussard. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
And next up, we have Ms. Lisa King, who is principal at the Shawshin Elementary School and as you know, also serves as principal of the Boutwell Early Childhood Center.
Hello, everyone. Um, so, this is just some information on my goal from last year and I'm actually going to skip this slide because I have a few graphs that are easier to read. But, um, I had a writing goal for last year in ELA and also a math, um, on, improving on student performance. Okay, so, this is the ELA, um, this is just a little, little graph of, of how we did last year, uh, or this year. And some of the facts were that, you know, four percent of, we had a four percent increase in open response. Uh, it was still lower, um, than what we would like, but we were seven percent points higher than the state. So, although we didn't improve on our goal, we were still seven percentage points higher than the state. So, we did so, um, did fairly well there. Um, in specific areas for craft and structure, we were eight percent higher than the state. And overall, our scores did stay the same. Uh, we still have a gender gap that exists, uh, between males and females, sixteen percent males and thirty-one percent females. So, in math, uh, again, we, we pretty much stayed the same, uh, for percentage points and growth. We did have about three percent of students move into advanced. And, um, I thought this was in, important to mention that one of our, our action steps last year was really to focus on fractions because when you dive down into the data, that was an area that we scored fairly low in for all the questions. And with that focus, uh, last year we scored point fifteen for short answer and this year we went up to point nine-eight for the open response. Uh, so, I thought that was significant because it was a focus point for the school. So, this is one of our school improvement goals for this year and due to the fact that there's a significant achievement gap still with students with disabilities and students without disabilities in math, um, the goal will be to decrease the gap. And, uh, there's many factors that, uh, we're, we're working on for action steps, meeting with special education teachers, um, meeting with, um, the director of special education and the math coordinator, coordinator also. And I have to say that, um, we have an additional special education teacher this year and I've already seen, um, just a tremendous difference just with scheduling and being able to have a special education teacher in each grade level. The communication between the teachers and the special education staff has already, I can see the growth already just in the collaboration by being able to focus on your grade level and having time together to work together. Um, so, I, I am excited about that this year. And it, the ELA goal is, is, is going to be the same as math, really focusing on students, um, with disabilities compared with students without disabilities. And, and pretty much the same action steps, um, you know, and really meeting with special educators weekly and meeting with the ELA coordinator, um, and really looking at student data and following up on that, not just individually, but meeting as groups and teams. And, uh, this is a separate goal, to improve the IST process by managing student reports electronically, implementing the D cap and providing appropriate feedback and goals in the appropriate timeframe. Um, and this is, this goal's really important. It, it does go along with our, our district improvement goal. And it's important because it ties into the first two goals, really. And it going into monitoring student progress, um, monitoring them closely, meeting with staff and following up. And so, I'm hoping that all these goals together are sort of going to work together, uh, to see success in these areas. Any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Can I just ask for just a clarification, just so that I can make sure I'm on the right path? When you discuss, um, the, the gaps between children with disabilities and those without, does that term disability encompass all struggling learners or just those specifically, um, on IEPs?
It's students- It's students on IEPs, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had put down at the end, the school improvement goal number three, supports educators to develop well-structured lessons with challenging measurable objectives. I think that's a great goal. That's, that's really good to have. Do we have any other? Alright, I'll, I'll accept a motion to approve the Shawshine Elementary School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Carroll, second. Sorry, Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Mr. Jess Straznick, who is the principal at Woburn Street Elementary School as well as the Wildwood Early Childhood Center.
Good evening. Make sure I use this the right way. Nope.
Down, yeah.
So just real quickly, just to talk a little bit about our goals from last year. Both in ELA and math, we had goals to close the achievement gap between our students with disabilities and our students without disabilities. We also had a school culture goal around developing a school vision and mission statement. So I'll get into the goals and we can talk about kind of where we are now with those. So our first goal, which is, changed it a little bit. So one of the things that we found is, when we look at the data around, did we close that achievement gap? We noticed it was a little bit deceiving, so if you look at ELA, there was a slight closing of that gap. But that's only because our overall group didn't do as well. So it looks like it closed, but it really didn't. So same thing with the math, but the math was actually a little bit more positive. We had, we did have a decreasing of the gap and the overall, how the students performed actually went up as well. So that was actually a good closing of the gap. So that's why you see in our goals, we don't have a math goal. We feel like we're on a good kind of trajectory with the math. You know, we're implementing the invisions, which is going really great. So even though we're still focusing on math, it's not an identified targeted goal. So when we look at the ELA, again, the, our ELA scores have kind of plateaued and maybe gone down a little bit, so we wanted to make sure we focused on that. And like Superintendent Delai was talking about with the readers and writers workshop, our goal really is to look at best practices in Reader's Workshop. Utilizing teacher-to-teacher observations, that's a big thing that we've talked about in a lot of teacher goals, their own personal goals. They've included that as something that they want to do, so that's something we're going to look at, that I feel is going to be really, really important this year. One of the other things too is we're going to utilize kind of like a study guide, like a book, we're going to have a book group that's going to start in December using Growing Readers by Kathy Collins. So we're looking forward to that to kind of, again, talk more about what is Reader's Workshop, what is guided reading, how do all those fit together? Again, having that consistency from class to class is really important, and also when we start doing teacher visits, that's going to be really important to focus on as well. And then talking about best practices and things like that. Also, understanding too that MCAS is not the end-all and be-all, we do want to focus on, you know, our AIMS Web and VAST data. So that's the stuff we're going to use throughout the year to kind of monitor student progress, see how we're doing. But then looking at, you know, kind of overall, and I use CPI because the state gives us targets every year. So by the year 2017, we're supposed to achieve at a certain level. Again, we're on track for math. In ELA, we're not on track, so we kind of have to almost get caught up. So that's why there's much more of a focus in ELA. So goal two, I think that's under the speaker, is looking more at our inclusionary practices. So that kind of encompasses all students, not just students on IEPs, but could be ELL students, any struggling students. I'm on the District Inclusion Task Force, which I'm very excited to be on. So hopefully taking some of the work that we're doing there and bringing that back, back to the school. Another thing that we're, we're doing too, kind of like what Mrs. King was saying that they're doing at the Shawshine, is we also have a specialized teacher at each grade level now, which is great. We're able to free people up a little bit more to do more collaboration between specialized teacher, general ed teacher. So that's going really well too, so I'm excited to see that. And we're already seeing really good gains with some of our students, which is really nice, and it's only November. School improvement goal number three, I think every year, we're always trying to make sure that we're doing a better job communicating with parents. So I've been, you know, getting some parent feedback and be doing some surveys around, you know, what kind of information do you want to see? We've already changed it this year so that we're doing weekly newsletters to parents, including more resources, links, different things like that, to make it more useful and not just every month you get a kind of how's everything going at school kind of thing. Also talking with parents about creating more opportunities at school for volunteer opportunities so that, you know, teachers, excuse me, parents want to come in, they want to see what's going on. So to kind of create some more opportunities to have them come in at different times, different times of the day, different times of the year, to do some different things. And then one of the things that's kind of back on our list, so last year, we, we were doing the goal around school vision and mission statement. We kind of put it on hold, knowing that the district was still kind of working the district one out. So we wanted to kind of wait to see where that went. And so now that we have the district one, what we're doing now is, our SAC group is looking at how to take that, kind of pull it apart and see how it really fits with Woburn Street School. So looking at, you know, parent responsibilities, teacher, administrator, student, kind of really pulling it apart. We're going to do some surveys with parents to see, you know, what, you know, what does this look like if you're a parent? What does this look like if you're, if you're a teacher? Those kinds of things to make it more kind of Woburn Street. And I believe that's, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone have any more questions?
Hit all mine. Thank you.
I know, this was very specific in a lot of ways. Yeah, thank you. I wrote concrete, specific goals. Thank you.
It's the English teacher you need coming in.
It is. We're going up towards the higher level. I knew it. Let me see. I take a motion to approve the Woburn Street School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Burns?
Subvo.
Second, Mr. Broussard. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
And next up, Ms. Christine McMiniman, who's the principal of the North Intermediate School. The down arrow.
Thank you for having me. We are well on our way at the North in working on, building on some of the progress that we had last year. We had some, some good news at the North last year. But we can start with, one of the goals we had last year was more about our staff meetings and our faculty time together, really about sharing and modeling best practices. It was very important to me at the North that the meetings that we were together at were not just me standing up there reporting out information, that the teachers were working together and collaborating and learning together. And all of the action steps were completed in this goal, and the teachers really strengthened their own knowledge of the standards, especially around English Language Arts. And the data team even began working last year with some protocols, using them to look at student work and sort of dig deep into some of the students' products and see what pieces the kids were missing and what type of specific instruction they might have needed to take their work further. So there was great progress on goal one. We had a goal in mathematics around closing the gap last year. It continues to be, as you all know, a trend across the district. And in grade four, we were able to close that gap. In grade five, we did not close the achievement gap. However, an important note was that in grade five, the growth rate, the student growth percentile was higher for students with high needs than non-high needs. So it was showing us that the students are growing at the same rate. They might not be achieving at the same level, but they're growing at the same rate as their counterparts. So that was good news for us around math. Action steps one and two were completed, and we were able to offer support, both morning and afternoon support for MCAS. Another piece of good news in, in math last year is in grade four, not one student in grade four placed in the warning category. So we had all students in advanced proficient and needs improvement. And moving on to instructional leadership, our goal from last year, again, very much focused around consistency in instruction with regard to the curriculum in ELA. And we made some great growth at the North in ELA last year. And much of the students' growth, specifically in grade four, was really in the very high and, and the high-growth areas, not just in moderate, which was great news. And we moved a lot of students into the categories that we wanted to move them into, further into advanced and further into proficient. So now moving on to this year's goals, some you'll see, a continuation. We will continue to work around closing the gap in goal one, specifically in ELA, and really to reduce that achievement gap by 5%. And we are focusing a lot on some of our support time, our academic support time and win time, where we're giving extra support into classrooms. And my leadership team is actually going to be helping me out next Monday on our instructional rounds. And we are going to be helping to identify two model classrooms for ELA instruction so that second semester, second term, we can have some peer observations going on with the staff members at the North, specifically around English Language Arts instruction. Goal two is really building on that PLC model that we started last year. It was really, I guess the word is invigorating, to participate in that training back in June with our teachers from our buildings, as well as our leadership team and many of the curriculum leaders around the district. And actually looking forward, if it can happen again, to have another cohort in the spring because the teachers benefited greatly and really enjoyed learning alongside their administrators and leaders here in the district. So we are hoping to move forward and continue to use protocols in our meetings. We're developing a school leadership team, our first meeting is tomorrow, and it's got a great representation across the staff. And we, by the end of the school year, at our staff meetings, will hopefully have tried out at least three protocols, three different types. One around a dilemma that someone might be facing in the school, one around looking at student work, and another one about reading a text together and sort of gleaning information from that and sharing back out. So we have some exciting work ahead of us, professional learning community-wise. And then the last goal is definitely around ma, math, and similar to the Shawshine, as I was watching Mrs. King, again, continuing to work on closing that achievement gap by 5% school-wide. We're very fortunate to have the students have tons of support this year around the new invisions math program. We have our CIT coming up on the 20th, and students, teachers will be collaborating together to support one another and receive training from Pearson. So we are hoping that with the interventions built into the program, an ongoing data collection and review throughout the year on a bi-weekly basis with the elementary math specialist, we'll be able to take a look at the data, both the pre-test and the post-data, post-test data, to see if students are making growth with the standards throughout the year as we head toward our spring testing. And those meetings are very, very important because when we see a kid sort of falling behind or not making as much growth, we go back in and we talk with the teacher on what types of supports can we provide those students. And we're also excited to take a look at some of the tools that are online and have some monitoring going on about how often students are using those tools online to help them. Some of them are games, some of them are taking another look at the lesson, but through a different lens. And how often the teachers are actually taking the students online, whether it's through the computer lab or with our new Chromebooks. Any questions?
That leads right into, I just have to say this, I went online the other night with my granddaughter, and we did both of those things that you said, both the lesson and the...
Take another look.
Take another look. She was so excited.
That's great.
So it was really, it's the first time she's shown me how to use something on the computer. And she was really excited, and she's not a big fan of invisions. But so anything... I hear all the time, I can't even go talk in her classroom because they know I voted for it. But she, things are coming, that was a wonderful thing, we had a great time doing that.
Yep, and they'll get more and more comfortable with it as the year goes on, as will parents.
Right. Mrs. Burns?
Just one observation, it's... What I've seen is, you know how we have talked, I know since I've sat here, about that dip that we see from the Woburn Street into the North Street? It's, it's so good to see that, that that progress is also narrowing in the success of, of just the student data, that those dips don't appear, and please elaborate if you'd like. Don't seem as significant as they've always been, that we've always kind of been wrestling with as to bridging that. And I commend you, I, that's great to see.
It's definitely hard work on, on the teachers' part, on the students' part, and parting all the, all the curriculum leaders. And, and Ms. Superintendent Delai has a, a great analogy when she talks to the staff. And she talks about everybody being in the boat.
Yep.
We're all in the same boat, we don't want to be in the water, we want to be in the boat. And I think at the North, we've taken that to the next level. And not only we are in the boat, we're all rowing in the same direction. So it's a good feeling when you have results happen and the students are making gains.
That's great to hear, that's great to see.
Okay. I'll accept a motion to approve, I'm way down here, okay, the North Intermediate School Improvement Plan. Mr. Mullis? Mrs. Broussard? Second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we welcome Mr. Dennis Shaw, principal at the West Intermediate School.
Hello, everybody. Good evening.
Welcome.
Down. Quick summary of last year's goals, again, I'm not going to read to you, you have it in front of you. But we set, you know, a pretty high goal with reducing the warning needs improvement rate in math for our special needs students. We were shooting for, you know, 65% or less, didn't quite get there, but we made progress. Some pretty good progress when you look at the results. We actually had our best year yet for both grade four and five in our, in our, in our scores and our rates. So things are moving in the right direction, this is again from last year. Next call, down, based on the fact, you know, overall, the open response rates were something that kind of stood out to us as we did some, you know, some analysis of the data. You know, there were a lot of kids just leaving short response and open, and open response blank. So, you know, I, maybe we shot it kind of highly, you know, the average rate was 45% unanswered. We figured we'd get it down to 15%, which was just pretty much impossible. But we did make some really good progress, if you look at that little chart underneath it. We actually reduced that rate to 31.6% blank, which was a 13% reduction in, in the blank responses. So, so we kind of hit on a couple of things that were working, and they were working well. We had some specific instruction taking place in some of the small group, you know, classrooms that definitely paid off. And we found it was some things as simple as, you know, creating the box for what the answer, you know, it needs to go in because the kids didn't know where the answer actually fit in the box. And like, things that we wouldn't even think about, but there were some, some very simple strategies that we, that we think paid off. So, so that, that worked for us. My, the data culture goal, we talked about, you know, the effective use of, of data, collegial collaboration. What really worked out well, assurance working out well again this year, is, is teachers are using data now to write their own goals. They're using data when they sit together and have common planning time, they're talking about scores, they're talking about, you know, how kids performed on the latest test, they're talking about how they can re, you know, reorganize the kids for, for like an instructional lesson where, you know, I might teach one thing that one group of kids didn't do well, you might teach another thing that another group of kids didn't do well. They're using the data to do those things, which is hugely important. And then last year, our school, with our, you know, school clinical, social, emotional growth of the students, we, we kept up with our pride program. We did have, you know, several assemblies, we had a couple of talent shows. And the fun thing at the West is, this stuff is all kind of designed by the kids and done by the kids. They, they decide what they're going to do, they have their own auditions for these things and everything else, so it's, it's a lot of fun. And that worked out well. I, I will say, and as I get further into my plan with the CPS pilot this year, with relooking, rethinking the pride program because sometimes these things don't always kind of work well together, so, so you'll see about that down the road. Okay, so again, the data summary for this year is pretty much what I just, what I just talked to you about, you know, the same scores for, for this year coming up. We did have some, some, some good areas of growth, we did have some... We did have some good areas of growth, we did have some improvement in the number of scores. We had like, you know, the advanced proficient in both subgroups and our general population. Okay. And again, this is just the same data from before, because we use that data to actually measure our goals from last year. The biggest thing for us this year going forward is we've, you know, been kind of math-focused for the past couple of years. And now that we have our, for a math program in place, and we have some strategies in place that are working in math, we're going to continue with those, and we're going to take those same strategies, especially for the open response questions and short response questions, and see if we can, you know, carry that over into ELA, and see if we can have the same kind of impact on our ELA scores, especially in the writing parts of the test, that we had in math by using some of those same strategies. That's pretty much, you know, the direction we're going in. So hence, you know, our first school goal is, again, like, you know, we talked a lot about the achievement gap and, you know, reducing the gap, and it's interesting, because I know that Mr. Strad, you know, Jeff kind of alluded to it when he talked about how the numbers are, it's kind of a moving target, because what happens is, as we, you know, improve the scores of our at-risk students, everybody else's scores are improving as well. So they, the at-risk kids actually have to do better than the other kids to close that gap, because otherwise, the gap stays the same, because everyone gets better the same, you know. So we recognize that, and we kind of accept that challenge, and that's what we're looking to do, is to, you know, just continue to close that gap. The average amount we've closed it, you know, in the past few years is about, you know, 3%, 4%, 2%. It runs around there, so we're going to try to keep it at the same place. And again, for the outcomes for this goal, you know, targeting struggling learners, we'll demonstrate improvement on Rubik's scores by years end. We do have a, there's a great set of Rubik's now we have with a couple of different programs, with the six plus one, you know, trade crates that we have, with the Writing with Colors, which is a program specifically, you know, kind of geared around improving open response scores. So we're using those, those tools. We're hoping, again, that the strategies, you know, that they learned in math will cross over to ELA, and will cross over into social studies and into science and everything else. And we have regular meetings, you know, to discuss our progress as we go forward with that. Okay, another goal, and you've heard this several times tonight, is the collaborative supportive school culture by use of PLCs. And, you know, the PLCs are kind of fun, because what it really is, it's just, I look at it as a tool to make sure that you have a conversation that everybody has to participate in. You know, you can pass, but everybody has to have the opportunity to talk. So you're not having that round table, everyone just got, you know, you know, ideas flying all over the place. It gives everybody an opportunity to talk. I will make a comment, when we talked about the chalk talk a second ago, it was interesting, because I did a chalk talk on the first day of school, and it seemed so simple and so easy, and the most terrifying part was to stand there for three whole minutes, which is a long, long time, when nobody was talking, but nobody was going up to the board to do anything either. So we're sitting there with a big idea, you know, and the question was, what do I need to be successful this year? That was a question we come up with, you know, at the end of the year last year. That was in the middle of the whiteboard, and I was so proud of myself using that whiteboard, and wrote the circle on it, and stood back, and I said, everybody go, you can't talk, everybody go. And for three minutes, nobody moved, and nobody said a thing, and I just melted, you know.
Talk about wait time.
Oh, wait time, yeah. That was 300 years right there. But you know what, it was great, because eventually, people started to go up and contribute. And as more people contributed, more people contributed, and people would go back up and add something to what somebody else added and things like that. So we've actually taken that first exercise, used that where to... The ultimate goal was developing norms in the building, like relationship norms among professional staff. So from that, you know, we had like, you know, ideas all over it. I then, you know, took that and kind of had posters made of it, left them in the teacher's room for a couple of weeks, and with a jar of pins, and people could come in and take, they get three votes, take three pins and pin the ideas that you thought were the best ones. We tallied those up as scores, and now, you know, we're looking at the five highest ones and kind of working out those, like, you know, what does this look like, what does it feel like, what does it sound like? So we're kind of working on the building norms that way, so that's how that process goes, so. Anyways, and again, and we're all kind of sharing these ideas with each other, it's great, because we talk about these at leadership, we're using them at leadership. We're all kind of getting ideas off of each other, which is just a great way to do it. So nobody's out there by themselves, you know. Uh, let's see. Where am I in this here? Oh, I'm sorry, did I go too far? I did. Yeah, this is my CPS, okay. Some of you, I think, are aware of the fact that we just had the, just the fortune of meeting up with Ross Green, who is the originator of the cooperative and proactive solutions. It's not even a, I don't know what you call it, it's a way of thinking, for lack of a better term. And we're doing a pilot at the West, we have eight teachers involved at the West Intermediate School, and one from the middle school as well that comes over. We meet every single week, and every other week, we are on a Skype, a Skype chat for an hour with a trainer from up in Maine, you know, with this program. We've all, you know, taped interviews now with children, like, you know, when you're talking to a child with an issue, we tape the interviews, we send them to them, and then when we Skype it, you know, they kind of give us feedback on how our questioning techniques were and everything else. The whole thing about CPS, it's really, it's one of those things that, when you hear about it, it's like, well, that makes a lot of sense. And it does, it just makes sense. But it's really challenging to do it correctly, because what you're really doing as an adult is learning to help a child solve a problem without offering a solution yourself. And it's so, so hard, when you think about it. You know, try it when you're home with your kids and stuff like that, you know, because it's really challenging. But it's been a fabulous experience, it's really going well. And it's less of a whole-school kind of a process than it is an individual relearning of how we interact with children. And it will kind of, you know, like spread that way there, that's how we're kind of approaching this here, so. But that's, you know, really, it's been fabulous. And lastly, and this is, again, something that we always have, you know, like a student, a socio-emotional, you know, development goal for the kids, you know, we do have our, you know, assemblies again, we have our students who go over to WCTV every other week, and they're working on like a video for the school, you know, like a day in the life of. Our art teacher now has a photography club, there's a bunch of kids with cameras that run around the school taking pictures all day and stuff like that. And the great thing now is, and thanks to Neil, you know, with the television, with the new display software that we have in our TVs, like in the schools and the lobbies, we get stuff up there within a day of like, all these photographs of kids, like, this is what happens in our school, and it just like, you know, flashes across and across, and we keep on adding to it, so it's really pretty neat, you know, for school spirit. So I think that is a bow.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Mrs. Bonish?
So, I know it's early, but I'm curious about how, with the CPS program, how the kids are responding, are they...
It's a great question. So to give you like real numbers, you figure there's eight of us in the pilot. I know that at the middle school, you know, the middle school teacher has had like, you know, she's working with one child, each of us is working with one child, so we've had like seven, there's like seven different kids, you know, that we've identified. Some of the conversations are really, it's a struggle sometimes to get kids to open up to you, because most of the kids that you're dealing with in situations where they always haven't been respected, for lack of a better term, are afraid to open up, because they think they're just going to open up, and then just, the same thing's going to happen, they're going to get told what to do again, or they're going to tell they were wrong. So the whole thing is building up that relationship with the kids. The interesting thing, when we send the tapes in, and we laugh about this now, is, you know, the person hears the tape, and all you hear is, you know, the teacher asking the questions, because the kid's just sitting there going... There's nothing on the tape, there's just silence, you know what I mean? Because the kids are sitting, you know, they're sitting and shrugging and stuff like that, so. And you have to say, "He's shrugging right now." But it's, but to answer your question, you know, I know that every one of us now who has had that conversation with the child, has a different relationship with that child, you know, which is really something. No, no, I'll be honest, like, you know, it doesn't stop me from walking down the hall telling the kids, "Stop doing that," or "Stop running and this and that," you know, but when you sit down with someone who has a real challenge in front of them, and you really take the time to try to find out, not what the behavior is, but what the actual challenge that they have that's causing them to act that way, it really gets to the root of things, and you're hoping to, you know, to give them some strategies going forward. Does that...
Yeah, yeah.
Make sense?
Just curious about...
I did want, I will add to the person who's participating from the middle school is Marissa Bellio, who is a school psychologist, and she's working with the child. And what I think is awesome about CPS and Ross Green is, I think that this, that Marissa has some challenges that, you know, above and beyond sort of the weekly Skype, and Ross is actually coming out himself to help, to see the interaction and help and give some really one-on-one feedback.
In this particular case, right, he's coming out, I think, January 28th, to actually, to help us out, so.
So it's been a really nice partnership. I'm a little nervous, because I made the mistake of telling Tom Scott at MASS about Ross, and he's coming to speak at the superintendent's midwinter meeting. So we're trying to book all of our dates for the next year now, before word gets out that this is working.
I was interested in, you were the only school that talked about the blanks. Do all, do we have blanks at all levels?
On the responses, you mean?
Open response.
Oh goodness, yeah. I'm sure, like I said, it was just, it was just like one thing, we looked at that, and we said, you know something, that's something we can probably do something about.
I would think so, yeah.
We're trying to narrow it down, like, and not say, okay, we're going to make everybody do this. We're going to say, as opposed to, you know, okay, we're going to find the kids who just leave in the blank, and try to give them some strategies, just like small steps, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, that sounds good, because I know when the test first started, we had a major issue with blanks.
With blanks, exactly.
And we had to spend a whole year telling them why they should not leave it blank.
Right, just put something down, you know.
Exactly.
But now, it's a little more than that, but, yeah, so like, we had some successful things that worked this past year, so like I said, we're going to switch them over to ELA and see if we can do the same thing.
And do the struggling students have, and the non-struggling students have blanks also, right?
Yes, but not nearly to the same degree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Any, do we have any? Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the Western Intermediate School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Bussard, and second, Mrs. Bonish, thank you, all those in favor, unanimous, thank you.
And next up, we have Mrs. Amy Girard, our middle school principal.
All right. Okay, so, as you can see in our executive summary, as Superintendent Delai has already stated, we don't have a performance rating over all our accountability status. So what we're using as an entry point for us from the 14, 15 school years are SGP. That 40 to 60 range is considered average. In ELA, in both the aggregate and the high-needs subgroups, our median SGP was in the low-average range, 42 and 46 respectively. In math, again, the low-average to mid-average range with 48 in the aggregate and 44 in the high-needs respectively. Our SGP range really is, it varies between content and grade level. So when we go to our second goal, you can kind of see the variability there, which would account for kind of having average growth, but on the low end. That being said, we did a lot of good stuff last year. We had classroom teachers posting their objectives every day, or regularly, and now it's pretty much daily. We developed a Win Math class for eighth grade, and teachers used empowerment time to really connect with kids in across all content areas. We also were able to do Writing with Colors, which is a supplemental strategy for open response. I think Mr. Shaw had mentioned that earlier. And I think the biggest piece for us last year is we adopted that rotating schedule. So that was kind of the big question mark, as I kind of embarked on this journey with you, is what that was going to look like when the kids got there and the teachers got there, and we kind of started to move things around. So the first goal was really to look at school climate and collegiality and collaboration, as I stated earlier. Mr. Olson had taken duties away from the staff to do empowerment time. And they did student of the term, they really emphasized the four Rs that are all over our building now, which is fantastic, and students have really embraced those things. We use a lot of staff time to talk about best practice. Teachers were actually talking about what they did in the classroom, which actually allows staff to connect and ask some really good questions, and take what we're doing well, and use it for their own, for their own reasons in their own classrooms. The second goal from last year was a pretty aggressive goal of a nine-point improvement in the median for both ELA and math. As you can see in the chart, we didn't quite get to nine points. However, we did get at least two-thirds, two of the three grades in both ELA and math to have an increase, which I think is really good. So that's those pieces. Wrong way. So when we looked at kind of what we needed to do, you know, this is a two-year plan from 2015 to 2017. And I think there's, you know, this is the first time I've got to talk to all of you about kind of what I envisioned. And so I thought it was important to kind of tell you kind of what I've done thus far. So I came to a CIT day in June, and we did a SCOG analysis, which is looking at strengths, challenges, opportunities, and goals. And so all the staff were involved in that, kind of talking about how they felt about how things were going. Over the summer, I've spoke to about 75 staff members, teachers, ed assistants, food service, and custodial staff members, kind of talking about what they thought, how things were going, what they thought our needs were. And then, the students arrived. So you're going to see how the building kind of functions when you got everybody in there. So that looks different, when you see everybody in the summer, everything's calm, and then the kids come, all 877 of them, and you see how it works. So, you know, primarily, I took a lot of the data, the conversations that we had, and kind of seeing how the building functions when we're live, and came up with some of these goals. Most of these goals are surrounding or centered on standard one, which is curriculum instruction and assessment. The reason that we're doing that is that we kind of, when you build a house, you've got to make sure, the first thing you do when you build a house is you build a foundation. And we need to make sure that foundation's intact before we kind of set up everything else. In talking to the staff, and kind of talking to colleagues, and kind of seeing once things kind of started to run, we've got some work to do on the infrastructure pieces. So I was very excited that I was given some leeway to kind of not maybe necessarily focus on MCAS explicitly, although that's a data point, and it's still very important to us. I thought the infrastructure kind of needed to be shored up a little bit before we move forward. So our first goal is to look at and revise the handbook in the program of studies. That's going to be done through staff volunteers that are able to kind of meet and discuss and revise and tweak. And we'll present it to the general faculty a few times over the course of the year to kind of make sure that everybody's kind of in agreement, and that there's a consensus around what's important to us, because those things change. I don't know the last time the handbook was actually kind of overhauled. So that's what we're looking at for those pieces. So we're hoping to present it to the faculty by May for a final approval. The second goal is looking at Tier Two interventions. I think this really goes nicely with some of the work for MTSS in particular. And I think it's really important to note, it's not just the academic interventions, but it's the socio-emotional pieces, particularly that advocacy and enrichment block. I know there's conversations about when the scheduling pieces were kind of being discussed, about automatically kind of inserting that, and I think we need to be really purposeful about how we do that. And I think we need to also honor some of our contractual obligations and have teacher buy-in about what we're trying to do, and trying to do that, as a first-year principal, was a lot to ask of the staff when there's not necessarily a relationship there right away. So we're going to take our time and be very purposeful about how we do things. Slow and steady wins the race. So we're going to look at IST, we're going to look at enrichment opportunities. I know some of the other schools in the district are doing some of these things already, so we're going to beg, borrow, and steal about what's going well and use it to our advantage, with the hopes of having both enrichment and intervention up and running as, you know, as soon as we can, particularly as it pertains to that intervention piece. Our third goal has to do with our writing program. If you look at our data, the writing piece is a challenge for us across all content areas. And I think the staff is looking for a consistent writing program that they can implement that's developmentally appropriate and helps them achieve the goals, and particularly as it pertains to those Literacy Common Core standards. So we've already sent some staff out and to start looking at some programs, and so that's been really exciting. The staff is very excited about it, and they have kind of embraced some different things. So we're going to start to integrate that with the hopes of piloting it towards the second half of the year across all content area, or piloting it in a small group, and then next year, across all content areas, including UAs. We're going to write across the curriculum, because I think writing is powerful, and it's just not ELA's responsibility anymore, it's everybody's responsibility. And our fourth goal is to really look at the curriculum maps itself, as we've kind of stated. We've got some unpacking to do with the next-gen science standards, I know, we've done a lot of work with that. Math is in pretty decent shape with some of the work that they've been doing, but we're going to just take another, done a look at that as well, as well as ELA and social studies. But also, the, our Unified Arts Curriculum as well, too, just to make sure that we're hitting all those standards. I think tech ed with STEM pieces is going to be, become more important as we move forward. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Bussard?
I have a question. When we first started talking about changing the schedule this last...
Yes.
...most recent time, and I know it's a little unfair to you, because that's when you were joining us as well. We did talk about the new schedule allowing for more intervention for the stuff that the kids need, and the enrichment piece, which I take translates as what they would like to do, or what are the extras? Has any family or any student raised their hand yet to say, "What about the enrichment? How do I get involved, what can I do?"
Not necessarily yet, because I don't think we've been as kind of out front in those pieces. I think that's something that we would look forward to engaging families with, because I think there's a lot of cool stuff we can do. We're talking about like, maybe doing, talking about hockey and physics and science, like, there's connections with what teachers are... Like there's connections with what teachers are passionate about and what their outside activities are with what some academic content, and trying to get kids to connect with teachers. And I think that's, at the end of the day, the enrichment and intervention is about kids connecting with teachers. We have a really big building with a lot of kids and a lot of staff. So ultimately, I think that's our goal, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any other? I'm going to talk about it later, but speaking of kids connecting with teachers, the middle school play that they had last week was wonderful.
It was fantastic.
Yeah.
It was really great. Mr. Stefano and Mrs. Madden did a really nice job, so.
I'll talk about it right now. No, they did such a good job, and they placed the student, those kids were so worried at the end of last year, when their two drama teachers were not coming back because they had gone to other places. And they were so concerned. And after this play, they're like, oh, we got two more great ones. It's incredible that the time they gave and the way that the kids did the program. And they're such a nice group of kids because they're happy. The stagehands were as happy as the people who had pots on the stage. And they all were supportive of each other. And I think that's, really, that's one of the ways that we get to give the kids a feeling of being at home in that school. And it was a wonderful program, and the two teachers were fantastic.
And we had a lot of staff who helped support the night of, and the lamplighters were great with the tech pieces.
Yes.
And so it was definitely a team effort, but Mr. Stefano and Mrs. Madden were great.
Yeah, it was great. Thank you. So we have, okay, Mrs. Bussard?
You mentioned having the students write across the board, so every class they'll get some writing practice. The one that always comes up is, why is my kid writing an essay in gym class? What is the plan for communication to families about this is why we're having your child to do this?
I think, you know, when you look at the physical education standards, kids need to know why they need to exercise, they need to know why they need to be healthy, and to really kind of think about that in a really thoughtful way. I think we'll communicate with families pretty upfront and openly, honestly, because writing's important. I think we need to have kids who are better writers, not better test takers. And that's kind of our position as a school, is that we want skill, skill to drive the conversation. And writing in gym is important. And even if it's just, well, how do you feel at the end of your ten-minute, your ten-minute continuous run? That's still important. But yeah, we'll communicate with families at the outset when we kind of just open it up next year.
Well, you seem to have settled in very nicely, so thank you so much.
No, thank you.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the Wilmington Middle School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Carroll?
So move.
Mrs. Bussard? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Ms. Linda Peters from Wilmington High School.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm starting with a summary of my 2014-15 school improvement plan. We had three goals last year, all focused on different components of student achievement. Two of the three goals are two-year goals, so you will see those two repeated this year with the additional action steps for this year. The goal around rigor, we did spend quite a bit of time last year during faculty meetings and during CIT Days following the move on activities around rigor. What does rigor look like in the classroom for teachers? What does it look like for students? We pose these questions, examine the practices, and we also examine student work. Towards the end of the year, we formed a team of teachers who met with me to discuss what we had already accomplished in terms of rigor and how we were going to continue the work. The next steps in the action plan for the school are reflected in the 2015-2016 plan. The guidelines and rubrics that we intended to develop last year, we did not get to. So that will be our first step this year, as we continue to work with our plans on rigor. And we will concentrate this year on observing classes as a team. We also had a goal related to our new schedule and the implementation of the interdisciplinary block. This also was a two-year goal. We continued last year with collaboration with North Reading teachers, with professional development opportunities during the months of January and February before our move. We formed a committee, we did call it the IB Committee, but it ended up to be really the Scheduling Committee, because we focused on not just the interdisciplinary block, but also on the schedule. We met faithfully two times a month, discussed all aspects of the new schedule, including the I-block. We surveyed teachers, students, and parents during the month of January. The committee spent a lot of time summarizing the results of the survey. We did present them to the faculty, and we did write a proposal to continue this, the schedule for this year, and met with the WTA and did some impact bargaining with Mr. Delai. We did address the concerns and did make some adjustments in the schedule. And we are going to continue our efforts this year, as indicated in the action steps for the second year of this school. Our third goal was specifically related to MCAS data and improving scores. We did exceed the goal, or part of the goal, since our 2015 ELA advanced scores increased by ten percent. Our goal was to reach sixty percent from fifty-six percent, but we did reach sixty-six percent. We also had a goal to increase our advanced scores in math from sixty-six to seventy. We did not meet that goal. We actually decreased two percent in the advanced scores. The part of the goal to maintain the ELA failing rate to zero percent was met, and the goal to decrease the math failing rate from two percent to one percent was also met. In looking at how we were going to develop our plan for this year, I wanted to focus it still on student learning and student achievement. So every goal really does involve some factor of student learning. We did decide to keep an MCAS goal, mainly because it does give our teachers the time to look at data, more closely looking at standards than at content. And this does focus a lot of our teachers to write their goals, their student learning goals around MCAS. Overall, the goals of the Student Improvement Plan for this year are all connected to student learning, as you'll see with each goal. We have continued, we will continue with the rigor goal. We are hoping to also work on more interdisciplinary connections with our curriculum this year. And we are hoping, as you'll see with some of the goal statements, to write a three-year plan to include some of these initiatives. In the first goal, this is the MCAS goal. Based on the fact that we do have sixty-six percent in advanced in ELA and sixty-four percent scoring advanced in math, we are going to try again to raise those levels to seventy percent in both. We will also continue to provide the intervention programs that we have, including our inclusion model and the math workshop classes and our academic support classes that run after school, to maintain our ELA failing rate of zero percent and to maintain our math failing rate at one percent or decrease it hopefully to zero percent. Those programs are running now. We have eighth graders involved in them as well. And again, we do this specifically by meeting with math and English language arts teachers to look at the data. We did that already. We have gone through all of the data. We've looked at the standards. We've identified and targeted specific students that need some interventions. We've also provided this data to the whole staff. So it's not just ELA and math teachers involved. Everyone is involved in some way. The second goal that I have here is around, again, the implementation of the interdisciplinary block related to our schedule. The highlighted action steps in red are the ones that we have completed. We do intend to continue to meet with the interdisciplinary block committees. We do have a plan to write our activities that we would like to include during that block. I have started to work with different people. I have a volunteer coming in and doing a yoga class. We have Sylvan Learning Center coming in to do some work with freshmen, getting them ready for mid-year exams. So they'll be coming in three times in the month of December. We have reconvened the IB Committee so that we can continue our work. They were a valuable help to me. The students were amazing on that committee. We have other ideas that we would like to continue to work with to continue offering more opportunities during that time. This is the rigor goal from last year. And again, I have highlighted the action steps that we have completed. We are going to continue, starting with writing guidelines and a rubric to identify what we, what we see as rigor in our classrooms. We've done a lot of work around this. The committee will reconvene, and we will write those guidelines together. We are intending to visit classrooms often as a team, not just my visits through evaluations, but as a team to provide feedback around rigor. I continue with the action steps. The observations, we hope to begin, we were hoping to begin them in October. We are a little delayed, so we will begin them soon. And we will provide feedback, and we will continue to meet for the rest of the year with the rigor team. My next goal is around developing a three-year plan. Now that we're here in the new building, and we've changed our schedule, and we've experienced a lot of different things, including different instructional practices, looking at a lot of different ways that we're even grouped in this building, where teachers are no longer in departments, they are inter-departementally grouped. So we have social studies and math and English and foreign language teachers all teaching in the same pod, and all having time to work together in the teacher planning areas. So we are looking at developing a three-year plan to kind of see, what do we want Wilmington High School education to look like in three years and beyond? So we will meet, I have already met with each CTL to plan for that. The CTLs will help me to develop a plan for each department. And then we do intend to form a forum for teachers' input and also for parent input. There are a number of things we want to look into. We do want to look into updating our courses and programs. We do want to look into incorporating some project-based learning practices within our coursework. And we also want to look into the possibility of hybrid taught courses or blended learning. My next goal is, again, around the implementation of the new schedule and looking at more specifically work with interdisciplinary opportunities. We are forming a steering committee to look at different ways that we can connect not just content, but skills. There are a lot of skills that are very similar and very common to many different subjects. And we are trying to make those connections so that students can use skills from one subject to another. We have a group of four teachers that are working together on that right now. And just by talking and meeting together, they have, they've seen a lot of connections. And the steering committee that we're creating will work. Hopefully, we will have some project work for them to do over the summer as well. And part of my plan is, and I have proposed a budget, to continue our work in the 2016-2017 school year on this initiative. The last goal is around helping students who are academically at risk. We have a lot of things that we do in the classroom, but I do want to provide more opportunities and more interventions for these students. I have arranged with my guidance department to meet weekly and to discuss students who are academically at risk. We have met with students, we have written plans with students to kind of keep them on track. I have set up a program for the evenings that starts next week that will run right up until mid-year exams for this purpose, so that students may sign up and get, I'm just providing space for them to do their work, and I'm providing teacher support in the evening to get some extra help. Some students just need a place to do homework, and I'm just providing that at this time. Hopefully, I will be able to continue that, depending on funding. I've also proposed an alternative program for next year. In the budget, I would like to consider an evening school program, not necessarily just for our at-risk students, but more for students who are not able to make it to school during the day. I think that we have several students that I could have used that program for this year that are struggling to make it to school. And I think that we, I think we can service some kids and get them through if we have an alternative for them. And that's one thing we did several years ago, actually, it seems like many years ago now, but I'd like to bring it back. We do have, we do have a need.
Thank you. Mrs. Bussard?
That program you were just speaking about, would that be like one class about going, is it multiple times a week, going through each subject?
The alternative program?
Yes.
The alternative program that I propose is a four-nights-a-week program, where there are four subjects taught, and there's a work component for the daytime. And it's, yes, three to four hours, sometimes three and a half hours.
An evening?
An evening. It runs for about thirty-six weeks, at least the one that I had proposed.
Very interesting.
It can meet graduation requirements. That's really the target, is to meet graduation requirements for mostly seniors, but we may, it's possible that juniors. I'd like them to have their MCAS graduation requirement done before they start that program. But I don't know what that's going to be in a few years, anyway.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Bussard?
I'm just curious, can you just talk a little bit more about what these evening things are right now? Are there like specific teachers there helping? Are they specific subjects?
There are four teachers there each evening. Math, science, I have a Spanish teacher, and I have a social studies teacher who can also help with English, that have told me that they can work in this program. It's two hours each night. I'm not expecting students to be there for two hours if they don't need to be there for two hours. I have probably about eight students, and I just announced this two weeks ago, and I do have eight to ten students already signed up. Some of them are going to be strongly encouraged to come because they are at risk now based on their first quarter grades. And some of them have asked just to come because they need the space to do homework.
Okay, so not necessarily at-risk students, but just?
No, and it is offered to any students who want to set up a study session. Sometimes they like to do study groups, and they just need a place to meet. So it's two nights a week, Monday and Tuesday for now. So it's two nights a week, Monday and Tuesday for now.
Okay, just wanted to...
Thank you.
That's nice. Okay, I just wanted to say that I, I love some of the things you were just talking about. One is the inclusion of the students in, in committees and things. I think that's really important, and I really think, they seem to be more enlightened than maybe we were, at least in my day, because they really think, they know what's going on, and they're not trying to get out of something, they're trying to improve, they're really trying to improve things and, and let, let us know what would be helpful for them as learners. And the collaboration with North Reading, I think is fantastic.
We're also collaborating with Bedford High School. We've started a collaboration there too, because they have a similar schedule. So we're look, we're looking at what, to, to work with teachers that teach with the schedule that we have or a similar schedule to what we have.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic. And then the forum with the teacher and the parents together, I, I really like that. And the interdisciplinary, you know, I love interdisciplinary work. I think teachers don't realize until they do it what it can do for your teaching, it invigorates you, and I think that's fantastic. You have so many things going on here that we didn't know about. I mean, if we don't, some of us, Mrs. Bonish might know, she has someone in the school, but until we have someone in the school, we don't know really specifically what's going on. But this gives me the opportunity to say that for all of you, I think this is like a showcase evening. Your work is so, it came across here as being really so inclusive, but also so exciting. You seem to be excited about your work, and it makes us feel good as a committee that, of what we can do to help you with that, and we want to support you and support your good work. And I think the superintendent is, with her entry plan, reminds me of Amy with her, you didn't call it an entry plan, but the other plan. It's such a good way now to get to know a community and then work through it. So I just want to say that I, I think we're all really grateful that you came and spent the night tonight, and you're doing a great job, great job. So thank you so much.
Thank you for recognizing that. I just, I wanted to, to add that as well, that I, I've said it before, I'll say it again, that Wilmington is very fortunate to have a very strong team of administrators and school leaders here at the district level, at the school level, and particularly at the school level, I think we need to acknowledge the fact that the demands of the job of the principal have changed so much over the last several years. You know, their job used to be more, not to diminish it, but maintain order and keep parents informed and happy. And now the demands around instructional leadership and the development of professional culture and collaboration. And, you know, they've all embraced their role as instructional leaders, they've all embraced their strengths, they've all embraced their challenges, and they've done the hard work to acknowledge that there are places where they can improve, identified goals for themselves that you didn't see here around professional practice to, to be able to build their, their leadership capacity, but also their willingness and their ability to find and identify the leaders in their building, to engage in distributive leadership, to identify teacher leaders in their building, and rely on those structures to move buildings forward and to promote professional collaboration in their buildings. So that, a lot of what you see in terms of the shift and, and the improvements comes really from their willingness to embrace that role as the instructional leader of their buildings.
Exactly, they're doing a great job. So thank you, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
It's a lot to think about, but it's also excellent that the town gets to see this and know what's really happening. You have a whole summary of what's happening in the school system, which is terrific. All right. Oh, vote, oh, sorry.
Oh, we didn't vote in this group.
No. Entertaining motion to approve the Wilmington High School Improvement Plan. Mrs. Bonish?
Yes.
Mrs., excuse me, Mrs. Burns?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much.
Shall we dismiss them?
Yes, you may.
You are dismissed. Except Neil.
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, I do too.
Thank you.
Nice. Good night. Uh-oh, Neil looks like he's...
He's, um, he's almost done.
Okay, now we are on school improvement plan F. Two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-one capital plan.
Yes. As you know, every year, we submit, update and submit a five-year capital plan to the town. So under Mr. Rogiro's leadership, he's developed this plan, he solicits input from all of the principals and district leaders. There's a lot of technology here, which is why we asked Neil to stay as well, to answer any questions that you might have about that. There are also some, some curriculum-type programs that are built into here as well. And the processes that we will submit this, once you approve this, we submit the plan as is, and we submit it to the town, they add it to all of their capital items, so they have a comprehensive townwide capital improvement plan. And they'll look at the F, specifically at FY seventeen requests as part of this year's budget process, and determine what they're able to fund, and they typically fund a certain amount out of, out of free cash, since these are one-time expenditures. So they'll decide what an appropriate amount of funding is for their capital expenditures. And if we cannot fund four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars in FY seventeen, we will engage in a prioritization process to decide what's the highest priority based on what they determine are the funding amounts that they can provide to folks.
I was very interested to see the Calkins reading program, because I used to teach about the reading and the writing program. She's a real expert. That would be, that's, to me, that's a really good choice.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with it.
I'm gonna let Kate tell you all about Uzi Calkins.
Oh, okay. I didn't know it was a person.
Yes, yeah.
She's the leading guru for readers writers workshop.
Okay.
Which is a, a model that we're looking to move to. The, the units of study that we're talking about here have recently been revised and revamped. Once upon a time, while they were excellent, they might not have been teacher-friendly, but that's been redesigned with feedback from teachers. So these new units of study for reading and for writing, we feel would be excellent curriculum materials to support a standards-based, balanced literacy approach to, to literacy instruction at the elementary level and beyond. But for right now, we're focusing on elementary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Will we see a presentation of this prior to voting for it, or is this something that we don't even have to, you know how it's curriculum-based, I just didn't know.
Oh, it's a little bit different than sort of your, your curriculum. These are, these are units of studies that, that are packaged, if you will, and support the instruction, the transition to reader, readers writers workshop.
It's not the equivalent of the adoption of an Envisions program, which had every component as part of the program. These units of study are one piece of a balanced literacy program, much like Foundations was the Phonics program that rounded out, again, one piece of a balanced literacy program.
I think what we, we could and probably may want to do, and we talked a little bit about, I know that Kate and Holly talked about it a little bit, last year is perhaps provide you with sort of a plan for, and we have a budget item in the budget, so as part of the budget process, we can talk about hiring a consultant that's going to help us implement the readers writers workshop model over the course of several years, and this is a tool that they will use to be able to do that. So I think this could just be a piece of, a presentation that we do about the transition that we hope to make in elementary literacy from our current basal reader, Houghton Mifflin program to this readers writers workshop model.
Okay. I wasn't quite sure as to what it looked, not being familiar with it, I should have asked Peggy.
I don't remember. It was so long ago I did it, but I know that she was wonderful.
You know, we do have in here, under technology, you know, this question came up, it, it's still referred to as sort of the Park Laptop Cart Project. We had that there because if the decision had been made to go to Park, that would have been, you know, pretty immediate. That changed, and so we wanted to be able to respond pretty quickly. With that said, it's still the case that by two thousand and nineteen, we have to be completely computer-based. So if it ends up that we can't fund a full four hundred and thirty-three, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that and see if we can maybe split it up over two years now that we've got a little bit more time, but we do have to remember that we don't just want to hand the computers to the kids in eighteen, nineteen for spring administration, we want them in their hands earlier than that so they begin to get accustomed to doing assessments online, which certainly, I think, was a bit of a challenge, particularly at the lower grade levels across the state, not just in Wilmington, for third, fourth, fifth graders who were not accustomed to, to taking assessments online and did not have the same, you know, digital awareness and digital skills as maybe some of the older, the higher grade levels.
Could you explain what that means, Park Laptop Cart Project? Is it a different kind of a, I, I don't know what it means. Is it, is it like a laptop computer?
So, the, yeah, those would be Chromebooks, those card, those mobile cards. The Chromebook is a, is a Google operating system-based hardware laptop that is, it has, we're in the, we're in the Google apps for head, we have adopted that as sort of our, our districts, it's not quite like a...
Platform.
Platform, yeah, of tools that we use with the students. And because the Chromebook was developed by Google, it fits right in with everything that we do, so all the tools that the kids need to function in and out of class are all in this device, and it's a very low-cost device. And also, the, for standardized testing, the Chromebooks have, because they're just not very complicated devices, and we can control them from a Google, it's like an administrative console, when they were doing a lot of the Park testing, the easiest device to use was found to just be the Chromebook, because you can set it, set the Chromebook so that when they start up and the kid logs into it, it goes directly into that, you can have it launch directly into that standardized test, and you can't get out of it. So you can, it just, just feeds you that test, you get, all go all the way through it, and it's done, and then you can shut that off from the admin level, and it's, it's just a much more seamless distribution of, of...
Can you go back in it? In other words, I always used to teach the kids to go through and do all the questions that you knew, and then go back and fill in the questions that you're not sure about, so at least you know you got that many right.
Right.
But can, in something like that, are you able to go back?
Well, that's really a function of the, of the exam, the assessment itself. You, once, I believe, once you close out of the assessment, you...
Get it done?
You can't, yeah, I think it's locked down at that point, but, but it does, from when we did the Park, it would show you, there was kind of like a panel where it would show you all the questions that you had, show the student all the questions that they had, and see which ones they had completed and which ones they started and didn't complete, which ones they hadn't completed at all, so they could go back in and, and edit what they wanted to. But we don't know what the, they haven't even put the bids out for what the new MCAS two-point-oh electronic assessment will look like, so who knows what, what it'll look like in the future.
So this, the amount of funding here represents, correct me if I'm wrong, so three carts of Chromebooks, and there are typically thirty, twenty to thirty, depending on what purchase, twenty-five, thirty?
Right, about twenty-five per cart.
Chromebooks per cart, and the cart is, the cart is important because it's, it's charging, is it also a wireless access point, or you're not using it that way? Just charging, so it's charging the Chromebooks, and it's also able to be secured. So you'll see some of them here, so you probably see some of them at the high school, maybe they have some already, and, and you wheel the cart around, so a classroom, needs a classroom of, set of Chromebooks, they just sign them out and they're there. So this would be particularly, we're thinking about the middle school, which currently has some netbooks, which are sort of quickly becoming sort of outdated. Some of them still work, so we might redeploy them in the elementary level, but this would allow us to kind of standardize at the secondary level on the Chromebooks across the, those levels.
That's the only platform that didn't really have too many, with Park, the Chromebooks.
The Chromebooks, I mean.
Yeah, was, right.
I mean, I know, I'm listening to some of the feedback forums.
Year in particular, they use the Chromebook platform, and it was, they, they found it to be very conducive to, yeah.
I'm not skeptical to this, and I know you do a great job at what you're doing, but it just seems to me, just like my own computer at home, they build in the obsolescence, and so it's only going to last for so long. But I, the books we're all excited about, and we got the laptop, I think we've been very good as a school community and as a town in supplying what we think we need, but then it seems like that's not the thing anymore, now we need something else, and I'm just...
Sure.
You know, not that I'm skeptical, but I feel like maybe we need to give you a little more help or something, because when things are going down in one of the schools and they can't get them fixed...
Right. We, we have, we have...
I'm saying this, sorry, I'm not saying this right.
I know what you're saying.
I'm saying that I know, you know, we had to have the laptops, we had to have the, the carts that we have at the middle school and the high school, we had to have these things, and we all agreed and we all got them, and then now we have to get something else, and just for those skeptics who would be saying, you know, what's going on here? I know it's not just us, it's...
Well, the device, typical device only lasts, I mean, they're supposedly, I mean, usually a device, everything that goes on is usually made to last for three years, or four years. Those cart, those netbooks are, are four years now. Five years would be, you know, next year, we're maybe talking about that replacement cart. We have three carts that are going in right now to replace, well, I shouldn't say replace, we've upgraded those netbooks, two of the three, in the last four weeks, so these would be in addition to those. So, I mean, you're talking a five-year turnaround for anything that you buy, regardless of what it is.
But in between then, if one breaks down in between that five years, that's where I seem to see a disconnect.
We buy spares and we keep warranties on, the warranty I, we bought on the netbook, the Ultra Books, that's actually the same as the ones we have at the high school, we have a five-year warranty on, so we, we're, we're trying to supply warranties for the life of the, of the product.
Oh, that's a great idea.
But we have, we, or we buy spares if we think that, that it makes, it's more cost-effective to buy spares than to pay for those two additional years of warranty, that we suspect that whatever the kind of device it is, that it's not worth doing that, putting the money into a warranty, we'll buy spares because it might be cheaper.
Oh, okay. I did, I, I just wanted to piggyback in terms of, I think that actually Wilmington, and I wasn't here at the time, I, I think that Wilmington has made some really sound decisions about its purchase of technology, because there are districts who, you know, as soon as, and I'm, I'm not trying to be critical of them, they, they made their decisions on there, but when, as soon as, as tablets came up, particularly iPads, they, you know, purchased them in, in, in the hundreds and then in the thousands, and Wilmington didn't do that, and just sort of waited to see what do you have as, as, what is the, the best platform? And the Chromebooks, to me, because of the cost, the price point at three hundred, give or take, is incredible, and that price is probably only going to go down, so I think we, I, I would imagine we're going to see Chromebooks be around for a while and that price go down, so as we have to replace it, it's not even as expensive as it is now. We'll still continue to have laptops, because laptops for our teachers and administrators, and that's something that we've continued to have, we've just updated as, and because they, you know, they, their useful life is, we get, we get five years out of them typically.
We get at least five years, and then a lot of them, we, we've put in money into parts and upgraded them and redeployed them. Yep.
This is Burns. I just had a question with regards to the turnover and the, every five years and such, and this might be, I might, might not be asking this appropriately, but Paul, I'm going to put you on the, see, do we have in our budget already built in, or, or does it only come up as capital improvements when we do have technology turnover with equipment and such? Is that already, I mean, considering we're moving in, it's a kind of a new realm per se, not so much technology, but this is going to be part of the education process and just part of that tool that we need to offer our students in that process? Is that something that's going to be built in as opposed to just doing it through like a capital?
Yeah, Neil's budget each year has computer lease purchases, and so there's money set aside in the operating budget to cover some replacement of computers and stuff.
Some, but, but not like the, a transition of those that are fading out after five years? After five years.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that is for, for that.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, I'm sorry.
This is like a one time.
No, 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 I understand, I understand it's building upon our technology, I understand how that is. But I'm just saying, as we progress and moving. Acquire more tablets and our Chromebooks and about how that, if that's kind of a, that'll be a constant line. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, keep, the key to that is really keeping, maintaining good inventory, which OIT does. Everything's got a label on it, they know what things were purchased and knowing when things are about to uh get to their, end of their useful life. And then knowing that that's the replenishment cycle versus the expansion or upgrade that you see here.
Mrs. Carol, uh would you recommend parents to buy their kids Chromebooks?
Well, so, I don't, I don't know how much to go into, but we are.
Does it be one of them a wish list?
So, right now, um, I'm putting together, uh, as Superintendent Delight mentioned earlier, a uh one-to-one plan. Um, what we're, what we're thinking about um is, in, in a former uh, uh survey. That uh, the former superintendent Ben had, had put out to the community, I believe we had a sixty-four, I guess sixty-four. It was around sixty percent response from uh parents saying that they would purchase a device for their child to use in school. This is when, a laptop, and this is when laptops were, you know, three times more than, four times more than the Chromebook is. Um, and this was three or four years ago when um it isn't, it wasn't as crucial to have a device in school. So uh what we're, we're thinking about is uh, put, we've, we would maybe partner with a vendor. Uh to bring a price point for a Chromebook. Uh, then we would have a, a website where the parents could purchase that Chromebook through. There, we would have a, a, a waiver um or a free uh Chromebook percentage. Which we could um mostly base off of uh free and reduced lunch. And I actually just talked with a, a school um district in Ohio today. And they actually did do their waivers based on the free and reduced lunch. So it's a good indicator as a starting point for um who may need a device provided to them. Uh, when we look at the, the prices, the, the amount that the district would incur to pay for those remaining devices. On either a fair market value uh lease or a lease to own after three years. Where we purchased the device essentially after three years for one dollar. Uh, both of those options look very reasonable, uh and definitely doable by the district in terms of um making sure all, every kid. In the secondary, six through twelve, uh has a device to use in school. Uh, it, we also have neighbors who've, who've done the program and had a lot of success with it. Uh, for devices that were four times more and they have over twice the free and reduced lunch percentage that we have. So I think, I think we, 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 we'd be okay.
So our, our plan is basically to begin at A grade level, perhaps ninth grade next year. And say, here's the website, go on the website, you can purchase the Chromebook if you have a financial need. Uh and you need assistance and base that on some free and reduced guidelines, then please let us know and we can work through that with you. Be via either uh a lease that spreads the payments out over multiple years. If you can't take the, the full, afford the full price in one year. Uh or potentially um offset that expense if a child has a high level of need, say a child who's on, on free lunch, for example. And so when you see in the um capital plan, Chromebook subsidy, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-four. That's taking our percentage of free and reduced lunch and assuming that some percentage of those kids will not be able to afford or fully afford a device. So the families won't, and so that we're going to uh cover, cover that cost. I will tell you, we have some folks in town, the School Business Partnership being one, that is willing to uh donate funds to the school department. To put into this, sort of, it'll probably do it through some sort of revolving account to help offset that expense for our kids. And I'm sure there's probably other um community organizations as well that would be willing to contribute. And not expecting them to pick up the entire cost, but that's something that they feel is a high priority for their organization, like the School Business Partnership feels. Certainly are happy for that extra money to help us off, offset that expense. So we'd start, essentially, I think we were talking about starting in the ninth grade. Those kids then become tenth graders and the incoming ninth grade and we'll continue on until then we can drop it down to maybe seven and eight, six, seven and eight. But that's what we're hoping for with se- several years, that each student would actually have his or her own device.
That's excellent, just, just a point of clarification. Um, if we were to vote to implement such a program, we wouldn't be dictating the type of device. Like, we wouldn't say everyone has to have a Chromebook when they might have something else that would work with our systems already. Or have purchased for them as a holiday gift, they give.
It's um, it would be, yeah, we're, we're still trying to work out that. But I, I think we would definitely strongly suggest, uh for, for, there's several reasons why we would, uh, you know. Prefer that they purchase this type of device. Uh, one of the things about a, a one-to-one uh device program is that uh, the, the easiest format for the teachers. Is to have a, 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 the same operating system across and, and you're dealing with kids doing the same. Using the, having the same tools, so when they instruct or give homework, they can give specific instructions and, and have it work out for the kid.
Right.
As well as the teacher. So um, we, we would, I'm not sure how we would, we would, cause I know it's, it's.
Yeah.
With a parent purchasing their own device, the, the device for the child, like, you know, there might be some variation on what you want.
Well, I, I just say, you know, you've got a kid who's really into gaming. My understanding is that the Chromebooks are not intended to be.
No, no.
Gaming devices. So you've got a family who makes a choice to purchase a, a gaming laptop or gaming device. And now the preferred device in the school is a Chromebook, so now they have to purchase two devices, essentially. And this is a family, let's just assume this is a family that's not eligible for free lunch. I, I can just see that being a little bit of a.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
A little bit of an irritation.
I don't think that we can re- require or mandate that. All we can do is say, this is the platform that's going to, this is the device that's gonna work the easiest and integrate the best with our systems and our infrastructure. Uh, it gets harder as you start to go further away from that. But I think if it was a, as long as it was a Windows-based device or an Android-based, with Google-based. I think it, as you start to get into Apples and I don't know, it may get more, a little more, but I think if we can say, as long as it meets these basic specifications. Then our system can handle it, but I think we would have great difficulty in saying, no, this is the only thing we allow in school and this is the only thing that can connect. So, I mean, we're talking with other districts, trying to work through that and, and figure that out.
And I, I certainly see the value in, in the ease for a teacher to say, everyone's got the same thing. I, I get that, believe me. Um, I just, that's the little, the little hiccup I see.
I think as long as we let the parent know.
Yeah.
Like from six, it's early sixth grade, certainly.
Yeah.
Uh, in ninth grade, you know, this is gonna happen, we suggest Chromebook, then, then they, they can make that choice. They can, they can buy two if they want.
Hmm, that's true, yeah.
You might also have um that whole lifecycle issue too, if you start in sixth grade.
No, I'm just saying, notify them, yeah, notify them in sixth grade that by ninth grade, this is what we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and, and families that have, you know, you know, two, three, four, five children, they've gotta buy one for each kid. I mean, that can be, that can be a hardship as well, so we'd have to work through that, you know. There are a lot of different factors, I think, I think uh we can work through them though, for sure.
The good news is we have, there are so many communities out there, not just in Massachusetts, but outside Massachusetts and New England, that have already done this. And um, and, and it probably was a bumpy road from them, for them, because they ne- didn't necessarily know exactly how it was gonna go. And I think we have the opportunity to learn from a lot of what they, the struggles that they went through. And decide, you know, what's gonna work best in our context for, for Wilmington and Wilmington families.
Great, thank you. Do we need a vote on this or this was just for us to know?
I think it would be, uh, it would be helpful for us, we have a motion included to vote on the plan itself. And then also the um, the requests that we put in for two thousand seventeen, knowing that when we come back to you in January. Uh, the, that request might be pared down based on conversations with the town and availability of capital funds.
All right, okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the FY seventeen to FY twenty-one Capital Improvement Plan and the capital request for FY twenty seventeen. This is Carol.
So moved.
Okay, Mrs. Bonish. Everyone in favor?
Yeah.
I mean, oh, sorry. Unanimous, Kim. It is getting late, sorry. All right. I didn't ask about the TVs.
I can respond to that.
No, it's fine, just fix it. Thank you. No, no, that's all right.
Um, s- uh, do you want me to address the?
Um, the end of the year report, yes.
So I, I just wanna start off by saying I'll turn over to Paul for any questions, but I just, again, want to reiterate. Um, once again, I'm very familiar with what the level of work that is entailed in putting this report together. Particularly when, you know, your accounting software is, doesn't just spit the information out exactly the way you'd like it. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of hard work, it's very detailed work. Uh, and I will tell you that when you get to the point where you try to tie out to the town's books and it, and it doesn't quite match. It's like finding a needle in the haystack and it's probably the most frustrating experience that you ever could imagine going through. So, you know, I just, kudos and thanks uh to Mr. Rogiro for being the detail-oriented person that he is. That he can get to this report each year in the timeframe that he does, so.
Thank you. Yeah, but this is a copy of the end of the year report that I got, was submitted today, uh BESC on October twenty-eighth. It um, it accounts for all of the revenue and expenditures for the school system from any, any different source. Allocation from the town as well as revolving funds and grants and so forth, so um, this is everything that we received and spent in FY fifteen.
I had one question when I was reading through it, does the Shawshank Tech represent within the district or without the, outside the district?
It's outside the district.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Thank you. Anyone have any questions? I should ask, how many people loved this report besides Paul and Mary? Restlessly, woo.
It's a, it's a lot of information.
Thank goodness we have you guys.
Um, and this information is actually the basis of what you find when you go onto the state and you look at uh the state, the s- school and district profiles. And they include all the per pupil expenditures, that data comes from each district submitting this to the state each year.
So written in other words, please, thank you. Oh, and look at his, another one. Financial report. I'm gonna turn this one over to, to Mr. Rogiro.
Thank you, so we go from FY fifteen to FY sixteen. Um, our FY sixteen budget was thirty-six point two million dollars. Um, through the end of October, uh we spent and encumbered about a little over thirty-five million. We have about, a little less than eight hundred and thirty thousand in the black right now. Uh, this will continue to change as we go through um the year, but I don't anticipate any issues for FY sixty. Uh, many of the uh variances, you'll see a salary adjustment, so salary changes, if you will, and lane changes. And that's, that's typical every year. This first report usually has a lot more information and we kind of clean it up with the rec- with the uh recommended motion that I have on, on the report.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Nope, I'll, um, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Director of Administration and Finance to transfer budgeted funds. From the salary adjustment line to the requisite line items to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases. Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Dr. Bjork?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have the Professional Development Plan. And I will turn that over, it's Dr. Burnham for.
As you know, this is a plan that comes before you every year. And um there are components that are essentially required uh of every district to have as part of their professional development plan. Um, but also in this document, you have identified areas that are uh priority need in terms of resources, professional development resources. That will support um the strategic objectives developed for the district.
This really had a lot of information in it, thank you, it was excellent.
Can I?
Yes, Mrs. Burns?
Now, typically, I, I'm not used to seeing it in this format and I kind of struggles cause I was kind of like, okay, well, what are the new workshops? Are teachers kind of gearing towards to enhance what they already know or, or um feel that they could benefit them in their classroom? Was that, were, were those workshops um offered or, I mean, we usually get a list, so forgive me, is this a new transition for me? So I'm not used to seeing it.
There were two documents that used to be generated. One was this document, the District Professional Development Plan. And then we also created um a, a, a District Professional Development Handbook.
Oh, okay, maybe that's what I was thinking about.
Used to list out all of the, the different vertical teams that existed and the dates that they would meet, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, with the revamping or restructuring of the vertical teams and transitioning them to curriculum teams tied to the curriculum renewal cycle and, and such. Because it was a work in progress.
Hmm.
Um, the PD handbook really wasn't developed as a separate entity this year.
Gotcha.
Um, but all, any of the elements that were um still valuable for us to hang on to that were in the PD handbook.
Mm-hmm.
That didn't tie specifically to um meeting dates and times and whatnot, we've incorporated into the PD plan.
I see. So um, has then, I, I, I guess, I just, all right, so will we go back to that more well-run? Well, I don't wanna say well-run, that's not the right term, um, a more diverse um protocol once we?
We can certainly reexamine the need um for, for a document like that. The, the audience for the document that's part of the packet tonight really is, is a district document.
Right.
For you all, for teachers, for the community to, to see. How our professional development resources are gonna be, you know, what priorities our resources will support.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the audience for the PD handbook really was more staff. So that they could plan their calendar year accordingly.
Okay. Maybe that's what I'm using it to.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, public comment.
We've cleared the room.
We did manage, I think it was, I think it was that math. Oh, dear, all right, other reports, does anyone have any other? Um, I would just like to mention one thing, that, that um this weekend, the um Three Sisters is gonna be put on by the drama club here at the high school. And it'll be Thursday, Friday and Saturday evening at seven o'clock. And I've heard it's every bit as good as the middle school one was, so that'll be good. And I just wanted to mention, the CPAC had a program the other night. Um, I'm sure they had to be really pleased because half of this room was full, there were at least forty people there. Um, even some children, which was interesting. And it was all children can learn and executive functions fit the strategy to the learning profile. It's, it was a wonderful, um, and when I was thinking, it was a wonderful presentation. When I was thinking of the professional development, this would be a great one to show. She, she did a wonderful job and um really talked about self-control and transitions and things that we don't even think about. Like, no child is lazy. When you think about what they all do, and when they're running around and everything, they're not lazy. But many children cannot transition from one activity to another, so they get all frustrated and everything, it, it had um.
Was that sensory integration disorder? Is that?
Just executive function.
Executive function was called, yeah, so um, it was really good. So I'm sure the CPAC, if you want any information, they'd be glad to give it to anybody, it was excellent. Okay, yes.
Our teachers have attended workshops through CPAC in the past and have received PDPs for attending.
Oh, okay, thank you, I didn't realize, that's great.
I do have that.
Yes.
Um, the school wellness committee met today and we talked about the three main reasons why people are absent, the kids are absent. Um, but our sixth grades right now have had no drug awareness. Our sixth grades right now have had no drug awareness at all because they weren't into deer. And now, so they're kind of jumping into the middle school and we're really into it. So they're getting very overwhelmed, I guess some of the parents are getting overwhelmed with it. And that you have to be twenty-one to buy cigarettes in Wilmington now. Everybody know that?
Wow.
And that's it.
Great, thank you. All right, anything, we're all set? Future meeting day, oh, correspondence?
Correspondence?
None, thank you. Future meeting dates and agenda items, December ninth and January thirteenth. And meanwhile, we'll be, January, on the twenty-fourth, we'll be meeting at the Roman House. Okay. Six o'clock? Is that good, six o'clock? Can you make six o'clock? Or does it have to be six-thirty?
I will probably just be getting into Wolverine about six.
All right, six-thirty?
Fifteen-minute leave. We can come right here from the train station.
Oh, then you'd be going too fast. We'll give you till six-thirty. That's a good, how about six-thirty? All right. You don't have to eat supper.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have supper, we'll have supper, so. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Ross.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, he's still awake. Mrs. Brusseau. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, Kim.